Let me know when they're ready.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, welcome to the April ninth, two thousand twenty-four Millbrae City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh two P M. And I have received messages that Councilmember Papen is in a personal engagement at this point and will be joining us later this evening. This meeting will proceed as long as we have a quorum. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Papen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Fang.
Here.
Four members of the City Council are present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please join me and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. We'll proceed with the ceremonial presentation today, and the first thing on the agenda item is the proclamation proclaiming April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four as Armenian Remembrance Day. As we honor the memories of the victims and acknowledge the enduring pain by the Armenian people and stand in solidarity in their quest for justice, recognition and reconciliation, and effort towards healing and building a more peaceful world together. So we recognize and proclaim April two thousand, April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four as Armenian Remembrance Day. And we have today, in the, do we have any audience, City Clerk? Gruzhin, from Armenian School representative?
No, we do not.
Okay, all right. So we will send in our proclamation to the recipient. All right. So the next item is proclamation proclaiming April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four as Earth Day and April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four as Arbor Day. Councilmember Ash Schneider, would you like to say a few words to that?
I'm gonna, normally I love reading the resolutions because it is Earth Day and Arbor Day, but because we've got big business tonight, I would only want to encourage everyone to think of Earth Day every day, and the environment takes care of all of us, and to welcome and ask all of you to join us on April twenty-seventh. I don't know the exact time the city manager will have that. That's when we're going to have our Arbor Day festival and our Earth Day festival with that. And please pay attention to your city agenda on the Earth Day and climate change activities we are trying to roll out and have been rolling out. Thank you.
And then also, as a city, we certainly support Earth Day and its mission since inception. And between bike sharing program and drought tolerant landscaping, offering free water conservations, educations, and our advocacy in sustainability, we as a city are committed to conserve valuable resources and make it more available to each residence, and also prevent pollution within Millbrae. So, and our recent reordinance, you know, championed by our councilwoman Ash Schneider, surely demonstrate our commitment to mitigate climate change and improve our air and water quality. So therefore, our own quality of life as a city as well. So as we celebrate Arbor Day.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you reminded me.
Yeah, of course.
For everyone who lives on the east side of Millbrae, that's El Camino Real, east to, well, east to the bay or east to one oh one, we're working on the east side specific plan, and there is quite a bit of activity that will be happening of an environmental nature. For all of you on the east side and everyone in Millbrae, pay attention to that project. The RFP will be being released, the request for proposal will go out shortly, and then there'll be a series of public meetings that I encourage everyone to participate. It is a huge environmental activity. Thank you.
So tonight, we have our very own environmental program manager Andrea Papajan joining us tonight at the council to accept this proclamation. Would you please, Ms. Papajan?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Andrea Papajan, City of Millbrae. I won't take too much time either, but I just wanted to invite everyone to our Earth Day celebration Saturday on April twenty-seventh. We start at nine A M. We'll be planting trees. At ten A M., there'll be a cleanup, and then after that, lunch will be provided. So everyone is welcome to come. We would love to see you there. And then Saturday, May fourth, we have a compost giveaway. So on the spur trail, the intersection of Elder and Millbrae Avenue, we'll have a large pile of compost, and so you can come and, and take compost for your own gardening. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Papajan, would you like to join us for a photo?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, bike rodeo?
And on May eleventh, correct? Yes, we have our bike rodeo, and that will be at the, at Taylor Middle School. And so it's to help promote safety for school-aged children, and we encourage you all to come. It should be super fun. And I think our city manager may have more details on that as well. So, thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Papajan, would you like to join us for a photo?
Yes, thank you.
And then our next item, we are proclaiming, we have a proclamation proclaiming April two thousand twenty-four as Arab American Month, and the city of Millbrae recognizes the significant contribution of the Arab American community in terms of cultural, social, economic, and political fabric of our nation. And by proclaiming Arab American Month, this effort, this, this offers all of our residents an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of Arab Americans to our diversity. Through greater education and cultural exchange, we certainly can foster greater understanding, respect, and appreciation for everything that Arab American community has done for us, and to continue to promote greater unity. So tonight, we're excited to have one of our own Assistant Engineer, Amir Zerika, to accept this proclamation tonight.
Esteemed Mayor Fang and distinguished members of the City Council, on behalf of the Arab American community, I would like to thank you for this proclamation recognizing the Arab American heritage and acknowledging the community's contribution to this nation. This proclamation is a testament to the inclusivity and diversity that defines this great city, and I'm happy to be a part of it. But I also want to take this opportunity to highlight the ongoing turmoil happening in Gaza. And I wanted to implore you, on behalf of many Arab Americans, a lot of them here today, to pass a permanent ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Any council member have any comments? Would you like to join us for a photo, please? Thank you for joining us, Councilwoman Papen. All right. So item number two on the agenda, agenda overview and staff briefing. So tonight, I have a special announcement, and I would like everyone to just kind of pay attention a little bit. Due to the high public attendance and anticipated high volume of public engagement, there is a need to set some parameters on how public comment is to be conducted tonight. Please know that freedom of speech and public process is paramount to our success, and the city of Millbrae is committed to providing members of the public the right to comment on items on the agenda, knowing that we must also balance the commitment with the need to conduct our people's business in an effective, efficient, and orderly fashion. The public should be able to express their opinions without intimidations, derisions, or otherwise any disruptions. This council will not tolerate any hostile or disorderly behaviors inside the people's chamber. Now, in order to conduct this meeting effectively and efficiently, public comment may be made available with alternative methods and/or time limited to ensure everyone can be heard and allow meeting to proceed. So tonight, depending on item number ten, how many speakers we have received, I think we're still counting it. We're setting a timeline at eight P M. to accept all the speaker slips for item number ten, and then at which point we will do a count, and we will figure out what the arrangement will be, and then I'll make further announcements as the evening moves along. So with that, I'm confident that these parameter will help us get through this agenda item fairly and efficiently and effectively in an orderly fashion. And this afford, and also at the same time affords everyone an opportunity to express their point of view. Thank you. So City Manager, Tom Williams, would you please provide a City Manager update?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council. Again, Tom Williams, City Manager. So a couple of slides, next slide, please. I have a few photos of demolition that is underway. We recently issued demolition permits for the former Millbrae convalescent home lumberyard and cabinet shop as part of the Millbrae Sarah Station project just on the west side of the transit station. The purpose of this is to eliminate ongoing nuisance issues and allow for potential interim use until the approved development can occur. As you can see in the pictures on the far left, that is a demolition looking actually from the BART station or platform west across the convalescent hospital. The picture just to the right of that is the old lumberyard. The third picture from the left is just an example of the recycling, significant recycling of material that's going on, and, excuse me, reuse of the lumber. You can see it on pallets there. So you'll see a lot of the demolition that's going on, and again, this is to eliminate any ongoing nuisance and to ready the site for potential development. As you all know, it's an approved project, but once we deal with high-speed rail. All right, next slide. So the twenty twenty-four commuter challenge has officially begun and will continue through May thirty-first. This challenge is open to all individuals age eighteen and above who commute to, from, or through San Mateo County, and are committed to embracing an alternative mode of commuting such as transit, shuttles, bicycling, carpooling, vanpooling, walking, or working remotely. So participants who successfully complete a pledge and log their commute hours are entered for a chance to win. This is sponsored by commute.org, and the gifts are two hundred and fifty-dollar e-gift cards, and pledge submissions must be made before May thirty-first. People can log on to the commute.org website, and then there's a commuter challenge icon on their website if anybody's interested. The next slide. So the, this past weekend, the city and the garden club hosted Garden Day at the community garden in Central Park. We want to thank all the volunteers who came out and helped clean up the garden and get it ready for springtime. We want to also thank the United States Army and the mothers and daughters of America for volunteering their time last weekend to help clean up the garden. So we cleared a total of five garden plots for new plot holders. Now all of the garden plots are reserved and spoken for, and if anybody's interested, you can contact Emmanuel Rosales. He's our recreation coordinator, either through email or our website and the recreation department if you're interested in getting on the waitlist for a garden plot up at Central Park. Next slide. We have a series of events coming up. I want to just inform everybody that this Thursday, April eleventh, we have an information meeting for the fire assessment that starts at six P M., and this will be in library room A and B. We also have another community meeting and information exchange on Saturday, April twentieth. That's at ten A M., and that meeting will be held in the David J. Chacootie Room. And this is, as, as, just to remind the council and the community that our fire assessment did not pass, so we are going to send that back out for a vote of the property owners, and, and these are very important information items to hear from the city, the importance of this, of this fire assessment. So again, April eleventh, that's this Thursday, at six P M. in library room A and B, and then Saturday, April twentieth, at ten A M. in the David J. Chacootie Room. Also, coming up, you can mark your calendars for our next movie night. It's featuring Disney's Pixar movie. That is April twelfth. It's at the Millbrae Recreation Center, great room, and the movie starts at six thirty P M. The movie's free for all ages. This will be our last indoor movie before we open it up outside, as this weather's getting better. Our rec staff is, is in attendance. We provide free popcorn, and it's just a great time for a night out at the movies on behalf of the city of Millbrae. Also, this Saturday, April thirteenth, is the grand opening of the Makerspace in the Millbrae Library. There'll be a ribbon cutting at eleven A M., and the library will host events in the Makerspace throughout the day. So please join the library. This is a great addition to our Millbrae Library, the Makerspace. So again, ribbon cutting this Saturday at eleven A M. at the Millbrae Library. Next slide, please. Okay, continuing with the events, our Community Enhancement Advisory Committee will host a native plant course on Saturday, April twentieth, at ten A M. This will be held at the Millbrae Recreation Center. You can join this class and learn more to bring back native bees, butterflies, and birds while saving water and time. The native California keystone plants are beautiful and resilient and boost biodiversity in the garden. So you can come to this, this event, again, April twentieth, ten A M. at the, at the Millbrae Recreation Center. For information, you can log on to our city website in our recreation department, and it's under Easy Native Plants Millbrae, if you're interested in signing up. Also, April twentieth, Saturday, April twentieth, a week from this Saturday, is our first public workshop for the City of Millbrae Social Equity Committee and Planning Process. This will be hosted at the Millbrae Recreation Center from four P M. to six P M. To register, please visit Millbrae Social Equity Workshop One to learn more information and sign up. You don't necessarily have to sign up. The public is welcome. So again, this is our first social equity public workshop meeting Saturday, April twentieth, at four P M. at the Recreation Center. And lastly, our Earth Day, as was mentioned, is scheduled for April twenty-seventh. So we will be hosting this starting at nine A M. The celebration will include planting the trees on the spur trail along Millbrae Avenue, and then around the skate park, the fitness court, and then just a general cleanup of the spur trail. We'll be providing a free lunch for all of the volunteers that are in attendance, so we look forward to as many community members that can come out and help us on Earth Day and Arbor Day and tree planting along the spur trail. So, Mayor, that concludes a report in very active city of Millbrae.
Thank you so very much. Any comment from the council? We have a public speaker for item number two, Roman Faschanski.
Hello. On agenda, I do not have the agenda item in front of me. If, if I'm correct in assessing, could you please refresh me?
You have agenda item number two on your speaker slip, which is the agenda overview and staff briefing.
I see. Thank you. My understanding is that, and I would like to propose motion to remove agenda item number ten from the agenda. I'm, I'm presenting it now.
Mr. Mr. Roman, let me address that. We're not changing the agenda item tonight in terms of the order and what will be discussed tonight. So if, I, well, hold on, hold on. He commented on removing an item from the agenda. So, okay, I understand that. Yes, you may do that. If that's what you said, then that's what you said. But we're not discussing the item right now.
Is it, is the proper step not to put that motion up for a vote, or to be proposed by a council member? That, is that not the proper step here?
Why don't we do that? So why don't we allow the public speaker to finish his comment, and then the council can decide what to do? Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The reason for my proposal of this motion is that I believe that the agenda item number ten is dangerously harmful to our community. It is a divisive topic of a political nature that has absolutely no standing in this government body. I greatly appreciate what every single one of you does for this city. In fact, of the ten years that I've been a resident here, I've never felt the need to get involved because, frankly speaking, I've been quite satisfied with the way that the city has been governed and managed, and I thank you for that. This topic has been of a great concern to myself and other members of the Jewish community because of its divisive and detrimental nature for neighbor to live alongside neighbor, for friends to get along outside of politics. It unnecessarily injects politics where it does not belong. Therefore, I ask that the motion be brought and voted upon to eliminate it off the agenda. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roman. Is there any other comment on item, agenda item number two? If there isn't any other item, if there's any other speaker for item number two, then we'll move on.
There are three hands raised online.
Are they all for item number two?
We can't tell because the hands are raised. It's like, Public Speaker Nava. For speakers that are online on Zoom right now, if you are wanting to speak on item number two, please keep your hands raised. Otherwise, please wait for your item to be called.
All right. We have two. We'll accept that and remind them that this is for item number two only.
Musa, Musa Tariq, please accept the mute. Musa? All right.
We'll go to Esther. We'll come back.
Okay, Esther, please go ahead and accept the mute.
Hi, good evening, City Council. I want to add to what the last speaker said. Only the federal government of the United States has authority to take an attitude or position on foreign affairs and foreign relations. It's called the Foreign Affairs Field Preemption, and it's constitutional under our Constitution, Article One, Section Ten. And so I do agree that this is not prop, this should not be in front of City Council at all, and the City Council should consult its attorney before putting forth this on the agenda at all, and it might discover that it should not be entertaining, spending staff time on it, or discussing it in further meetings. Thank you.
That is all the public speaker online.
Okay, thank you. Are we done with item number two? Okay, moving on to item number three, approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes on January nine, two thousand twenty-four. We have special meeting minutes in January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, special meeting minutes of January twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and also special meeting minutes in January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Any council comments or questions and discussions? Ms. Schneider?
Move to approve for minutes as stated by the mayor.
I got a, I got a motion to approve all four meeting minutes?
Second.
We'll have a second from Ms. Cahalan. We'll catch you next time, Vice Mayor. Any further comments? If nothing else, roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
The four sets of minutes are approved by motion of, by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much. Moving along, item number four, an oral report from City Committee and Commission Chair. And tonight, we have the adoption of fiscal year 2024 and '25 Sister City Commission Work Plan. This is an action item. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please present his item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Recreation Director, Ms. Hannah Moran, for a presentation and introduction of our two representatives, one from Sister Cities Commission for the work plan, and the second for the Senior Advisory Committee Work Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. I want to go ahead and bring up our Vice Chair of the Sister Cities Commission, Kathleen Kamira, who will be presenting this tonight.
It's good to see you, Catherine.
Thank you, and thank you, Hannah. And good evening, Mayor, and City Council Members. On behalf of the Millbrae Sister Cities Commission, it's my pleasure to make this presentation this evening. I think you have slides. Oh, right. You will notice that we currently have 10 members on our commission, and we have one vacancy. The former Chair, Robert Gottschalk, stepped down from his position as Chair a few weeks ago, but I would like it to be on the record, and on behalf of our commission, to recognize him for the many years that he has served as Chair of this commission. His wisdom, his expertise has been amazing, and the good news is that although he will no longer be Chair, that he will continue to serve on the commission, so we will benefit from his wisdom and expertise. So please let the record state that we really appreciate and want to thank him publicly for his, for his many years. Thank you. And also, we're very pleased to have Mayor Feng as the council liaison on our commission, and we look forward to your attending our meetings moving forward. So briefly, I would like to just, before we get started, and you do have a full report in your packet, so I don't need to go through every detail in the report, but basically just to let you know what our vision, mission, and values are. And the vision is to enhance the quality of life in our community, providing great services, encouraging community engagement, entering economic growth, fostering economic growth, and embracing the cultural diversity in a safe environment. That's, and the values are to promote greater global understanding of other cultures and an international perspective for Millbrae in light of the significant changes happening throughout the world, to grow relationships with sister cities and friendship cities, to foster cultural and educational exchange programs, and identify and promote trade relationships, to perform each of these duties as may be assigned by the City Council. So for last year, we, some of the activities we did, we hosted a booth at the 2023 Japanese Culture Festival, and we will probably do that again this year. Commissioners and commission liaisons made attempts to reconnect with some of our current sister and friendship cities, including extending an invitation to the Consul General of Chile, Consul General Aliende, and that is ongoing, and we're hoping to announce a date for him to come to talk about Lassarena in the future. The materials for the olive tree plaque have been ordered and are currently in the process of installation by the Millbrae Parks Department. And payment to keep the website running was made, and information on the website is in the process of being updated and will continue to be updated as needed. And for this coming year, 2024, 2025, we have five tasks, and they're all listed in your packet. As an ongoing activity, we serve as the recommending body for matters as defined or as required in Resolution Number 1635. We actually conduct an evaluation of programs and events for consideration and recommendation to the City Council. We collaborate with other committees and commissions as necessary if recommendations coincide. The commission will continue to strengthen sister city relationships with Lassarena, Chile, Mosta, Malta, and strengthen the friendship relations with Hanyu, Japan, Taishan, China, Ramallah, Palestine, and Dongguan, China. This year, the Sister Cities Commission have made a decision and approved the possibility of planting cherry trees on the spur trail in Millbrae to create a Japanese garden and area, to be installed on the spur around Magnolia Avenue and Millbrae Avenue. The area would help recognize the City of Millbrae's relationship with Hanyu, Japan, and provide an area for tranquility and reflection. It will be a great addition to the Millbrae Avenue color scheme of things when we have cherry trees blooming on Millbrae Avenue. The commission wishes to keep their annual membership with Sister Cities International, website licensing, and partnerships with certain events and organizations with the approval of the City of Millbrae, including this year and last year being a publicity partner for the AAPI Celebration in San Francisco, which will be on May 1st. And I know that Mayor Feng has attended that event in the past, and I'm very pleased that our Sister City Commission is named as a publicity partner at that event. And I think that's about it, unless you have any questions. I don't want to keep everybody waiting for the other agenda items, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much for all the hard work for the past year, and also your work plan for the upcoming year. I'd like to open it up for the council for any questions or comment. Councilwoman and Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Acting Chair Kamora, for everything, and Sister City, and I couldn't be more excited at the cherry trees. And what will be a contemplation garden right at Mills High School, so our students who need a place, a break, a place to kind of recollect their thoughts, it'll fit in nicely there, so couldn't be happier. Question, City Manager, and I've forgotten about this, but I attended, along with former Chair Gottschalk, our visit to Mosta, our sister city, that was back in 2019. And at that time, we talked about creating a display case either at the rec center when it was going to get built, or, or City Hall, for the gifts that we get from our friendship and sister cities. I still have a collection of gifts for that, and I didn't want to put it on your work plan, but it, when I was reading the work plan, it reminded me that we do need that place so that we can put and share with the public the gifts that we've gotten from our, our friendships across.
Yeah, it would be, basically be replacing something we had in the old rec center.
In the old rec center. So if we could somehow put that not on our high to-do list, but on our to-do list and not be forgotten. Thank you so much. And Chair Gottschalk, I know you're out there watching, thank you for your many years of service, and our two trips together on Sister Cities, which for the public, we pay our own way.
Yes, indeed, we do. Okay, any more questions?
Thank you. Any further questions?
We have to approve.
Oh, yes, so.
Can we entertain a motion for the approval?
Pappin, move approval.
Councilwoman Pappin?
Second.
We have a second, Ms. Cahalan, roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
The City Council adopted the fiscal year 2024, 2025 Sister Cities Work Plan by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Great, and now I'd like to bring up Rochelle Mullen. She is the Chair of the Senior Advisory Committee, and she will be presenting their work plan for the fiscal year '24, '25. So here's Rochelle. She also has some other committee members in the audience supporting her today, so thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, Hannah. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, thank you for letting us present our goals for the year. We are the Senior Advisory Committee. Our members currently are seven. We would like others to apply, we could use more people. Our current members are myself, Marlene McBride, my Vice Chair, Mary Ellen Pellegrini, Mimi Lee, Mimi Lin, Patrick Cheng, and Vanita Gosh. In 2023, we published and distributed a bi-monthly senior line, which we've been doing for several years. We continue to participate and assist the City of Millbrae to maintain its age-friendly certification, which is very important to us. We established a database to facilitate birthday wellness calls and the distribution of matters concerning seniors. I love making the birthday calls to people. We receive and disseminated information from various senior organizations, such as Self-Help for the Elderly, Friendly Voices, the WLP program, and the San Mateo County Older Adult Committee, an AARP via the Millbrae Senior Line. And we support the monthly senior luncheons, which we had today. And we encourage any senior who wants to come to our senior lounge, it's the second Tuesday of every month, and we have a great time. We also participated in city events, and we receive information from various senior organizations. We partnered with the San Mateo Journal in hosting the Millbrae Senior Showcase, and we had a lot of people from all over San Mateo County coming to our senior showcase. We established senior stories, which Marlene, my Vice Chair, organizes, and we have wonderful people, there are seniors in Millbrae. We encourage people to come on the first Tuesday of every month to the senior lounge at 10 o'clock to hear about the wonderful lives our seniors have lived. We've also distributed the AARP Age Friendly Community Survey to seniors in the Millbrae and had it translated in traditional Chinese. Now, the new year. For 2024 to '25, our work plan goals, we have seven or eight tasks here. Task one, we're advisory body to the City Council. That means, as an ongoing activity, we serve as a recommending body for matters as defined in Resolution Number 16-37. Our task two, promote communication with the senior community. We publish and distribute the bi-monthly senior line. Maintain a database of senior operations to facilitate the monthly birthday wellness calls, emails, and distribution of matters concerning seniors. We facilitate outreach to bilingual citizens via communication, and we continue our senior stories program. We support the San Mateo Daily Journal in the senior showcase by providing space in the Millbrae Recreation Center. The Senior Advisory Committee will hold a booth at the event to promote the Millbrae Recreation activities for seniors. That's task three, programs and fees. As an ongoing activity, review and make recommendations to the Park and Recreation Commission for review by the City Council for parks and recreation operation, programming, and service fees. Task four, build relationships with local senior organizations. We connect, we want to connect with local senior organizations to build relationships and to increase communication and outreach within the senior community, which is growing in our city. Maintain relationship and provide support with Self-Help for the Elderly and the San Mateo County Older Adults Committee, and volunteers are needed. Task number five, participate in joint activities with the Youth Advisory Committee. Members of the Youth Advisory Committee are establishing senior technology classes with the assistance of members of the Senior Advisory Committee. Task six, age-friendly certification. We will continue our collaboration to maintain age-friendly certification for the City of Millbrae. It is not a done deal, we always have to keep improving on this certification. The Senior Advisory Committee is to work as a task force, along with CAFE, which is Center of Age Friendly Excellence, to create the Age Friendly Action Plan. And task seven, hunger mitigation programs. We're going to surprise, provide support and volunteers needed for the Self-Help for the Elderly lunches, and we're looking at the brown, a brown bag program. Right now, we have it currently at the two cities, one on either side of us, and we're still looking to see whether it's feasible for us to have something like that. And we will publicize on the senior line in the city website. And we hope that you will approve everything we want to do this year, and we appreciate Councilwoman Pappin as our liaison.
Thank you so much for your presentation and for all you do for the past year, for many, many years that you've been on our Senior Advisory Committee as well. Both of you joining us tonight, so thankful for that.
We are.
Oh, there you go, gotcha. Thank you so much. Anyone on the council? Any comment? Ms. Cahalan? Councilwoman?
Thank you so much. You all are doing incredible amount of work and such valuable work. I just had one question. The last program, the brown bag program, is that brown bag meals or grocery bags?
Grocery bags. And we did have something at before at the original Recreation Center, and then when that went away, we didn't have anything for a while. We're looking now to see if it's something we need to bring back. As I said, Vanita went and did some research, and we, there is a program in Burlingame, and there is one in San Bruno, and we're just trying to see. There's a great deal of volunteer work that needs to be done to do this, so.
Is it in partnership with the food bank at all?
I believe it is. I can ask Vanita to.
We'd like to invite you to the podium, otherwise with the mic not getting you on record.
This is Vanita Gosh.
Thank you, Vanita.
Okay, these programs are established in partnership with Second Harvest. Second Harvest provides the groceries, they deliver them to the distribution center, and volunteers are required to re-bag them and distribute them to the individuals who need help. There is a income limit for people who can apply for these groceries, so it would require certain amount of administrative work to register these people and to keep them on the rolls.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vanita. I think we have Councilwoman, okay, Councilwoman Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. A follow-up to Councilwoman Cahalan, and then a different point. When I was knocking on doors, we had people that used to come to the old program before the rec center burned, but now they are homebound. So when you consider the brown bag program, could you also include how we might get groceries to people that are homebound? They can't drive anymore.
Okay, so we would have to.
Yeah, and we have.
Do we get close to the mic? Thank you.
Yeah, we would have to consider how the groceries could be delivered to them. That, of course, would require more volunteers to do the deliveries.
And I might, if it's after school hours, as an advisor to the Millbrae Leos Club, we have over 160 kids, some of whom drive, that might be a good fit. So just keep that in mind. Second question, as many people who follow council know, I'm a caretaker for my mom. So for all of us who are family caretakers, I wonder in your existing work plan if there might be a way either to have a caretaker's gathering where we can get together and share ideas, or, this'll sound funny, it'll sound really funny, there's a, a family that used, a whole network that used to provide babysitting services, and it was in the Daily Journal in the last 10 days, and it's, it's going away after decades. in the last 10 days, and it's going away after decades. But when I'm at a council meeting, if I have to have someone in at the hospital, it costs me several hundred dollars to have someone watch my mom. So I'm wondering if you look at the caretaker, especially family caretakers, if there might be some services that we could offer? Even just a break once a year would be kind of nice. So just consider that in your work plan.
We would think about.
That would be lovely.
The whole issue. We haven't thought about it at all so far.
Yeah. The caretakers, Peninsula Family Services has a counseling session actually for caretakers. It's really hard to find the time to get to go, but sometimes we all need a little break. And I love mom. So it's nothing about that but a little break, and she loves the phone calls. They mean so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Pappin.
I'd like to thank you, ladies and the whole committee, ladies and gentlemen. It's a great program. You put a lot of work into this work plan and happy to discuss Councilmember Schneider's comments at a future meeting. And for those who don't know, there's also Meals on Wheels that operates within the city of Millbrae for people who are homebound and of need. So we look forward to more activities and all the great work you're doing, so I'd like to move approval of this work plan, please.
Second. So we have a motion from Ms. Pappin and also a second from Ms. Anne Schneider. We have a couple public comment. City Clerk, would you please make sure that they are, in fact, for this particular item?
Navat, if you could go ahead and accept a mute, and please make sure this item is about the senior advisory work plan, if this is the item you want to comment on.
Sorry, but I went about agenda item 10, so no, please retract me. I don't know when I need to raise my hand for that.
Thank you.
Okay. So we don't have any public comment on this item, and then we have a motion and also a second closing public comment. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
The adoption of the fiscal year 2024-2025 Senior Advisory Committee work plan, last by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Rochelle. Thank you, Marlene, for joining us, and also Vanita for joining us tonight, and everybody else on the committee for all your hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're moving on to public communication. This portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on item not appearing on tonight's agenda. Speaker must address subject matter within the jurisdictions of the city council. Each speaker will have two minutes tonight, because I have seven speakers here. And the speakers is to address directly to the entire council, not individual council members and not members of the public. We will first begin with in-person speaker and then followed by speakers online. So far, I have one, two, so nine total at this point. Everybody, it's two minutes.
Two minutes.
Okay, all right. So first one is Justin F. Justin, followed by Steve Wise. Justin, please, followed by Steve Wise.
Hello, this is good.
Go ahead. Two minutes.
Hello, Council. I'm here today to request that you agendize a ceasefire resolution and then vote to.
This is item number 10, and so this is for public communication for item not on tonight's agenda. If you want to comment on item number 10, you can wait.
Yeah, my bad. I.
That's okay. Just want to explain it. We'll see you a little bit later.
Yeah.
Mr. Steve Wise.
Good evening, Council, and Eid Mubarak to those observing. Does the council believe that Black Lives Matter? If so, why haven't you proposed a resolution regarding the conflict in Sudan? Does the council support Muslims and stand against Islamophobia? If so, why haven't you proposed a resolution regarding mistreatment of Muslims in China? Do you support the LGBTQ community? If so, why haven't you condemned governments that kill LGBTQ individuals by throwing them off roofs? Because you were elected to lead the city of Millbrae and deal with the many local challenges we face: housing, safety, La Quinta project. Just because they are local does not make them unimportant. Regarding national and international issues, I recommend doing what I've been doing: email and call members of Congress, President Biden, the UN ambassador. What outcomes can be expected from debating international issues at a council meeting? Divisiveness, racism, misinformation, seven-year-olds getting harassed for their ethnicity, not just by students, but also by teachers? Look at what's happening in Oakland and Berkeley. Is Millbrae next? And what would change globally? Will foreign governments, the UN, or even Washington pay attention to Millbrae? No. Millbrae's local challenges are of the utmost importance. I appreciate the hard work the council puts into addressing them. I would like to emphasize the need for all residents, regardless of race, gender, religion, to feel safe and happy living in Millbrae. Thank you for your dedication to the city, and I would ask that you please follow San Jose's precedent and add a bylaw to.
Thank you, Steve.
Any foreign policy resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is Susan Dabitt. Susan Dabitt, followed by Linda Curry.
Hello, I think I miswrote, and I should be on for agenda number 10.
Okay. We'll save your speaker card, and then we'll call you when the item comes up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dabitt. Okay, all right. And then Michael Kelly, followed by Enas, E-N-A-S.
Good evening, esteemed city council. Michael Kelly, lived in Millbrae since 93, on and off since then. With respect to Millbrae's resolutions, it's disappointing that it was overlooked. A resolution was passed that every meeting would start with a land acknowledgement. So I'm going to take a little bit of my time to make sure that happens. The Millbrae City Council acknowledges that we accept or that we occupy the unceded ancestral, traditional, and contemporary homeland of the Rama Tish Aloni peoples. I'll leave it at that because I have other things to say, too. With respect to the things going on in Millbrae the last speaker was referring to, I have an ask of the city council. As most of the city council knows, and maybe some in the audience, the county has moved forward to purchase the La Quinta. The transaction, as I understand, is an escrow. It's being blocked with an old racist relic of the 1950s to stop that project moving forward with permanent supportive housing. And I would like the council to think for a moment, what's going to happen if you're successful with this lawsuit? Because my ask is that you retract it. If you prevent the county from creating permanent supportive housing at the La Quinta property, the county is still going to own the building, and then they will be able to put in transitional housing, which we've heard so many people complain about, that's what they don't want. You'll also lose the $2 million the county has offered to cover three years of the TOT, the transient occupancy tax. And transitional housing, I mean, if the county owns it, that's gone anyway. So if you don't make the right decision here and support permanent supportive housing, you're going to create your own self-fulfilling prophecy of the exact scenario you didn't want. You claim to be financially motivated. The county has offered three years to match the money with a promise to revisit that in three years, two additional deputies, and the humanitarian aspect of families, our neighbors, living with children.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
This is for public communication, not on items on tonight's agenda. Okay, thank you.
Good evening again. The topic of my address at the moment is the dangerous rise in antisemitism and the recent causes of it. On October 7, 2023, Hamas, an internationally recognized terrorist organization, perpetrated one of the single worst terrorist attacks.
Order, 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 please. Order. Okay. On item 10, it is a very specific discussion. This is public communication. Please extend the same courtesy as I expect they are to extend to you as well. Please.
Thank you. May I also have the clock rewound?
Yes. Give him another 15 seconds, please.
It was more than that.
20. Go ahead.
On October 7, 2023, Hamas, an internationally recognized terrorist organization, perpetrated one of the single worst terrorist attacks against the civilian population in the state of Israel. Nearly 1,300 women, children, and men were murdered, mutilated, and desecrated on that day, and nearly 250 were taken hostage into Hamas-controlled Gaza. While there were some expressions of sympathy for the victims in the immediate aftermath of the attack, many of those expressions were sparse, reserved, and often accompanied by caveated justification. Literally, within 24 hours of the attack, loud and abrasive voices swarmed to the world stage, attempting to excuse, justify, and in some cases even deny the occurrence of the attack. Now, let me be clear. This was not a targeted bombing of an enemy military installation with an inadvertent death count of civilian casualties. This was a door-to-door, car-to-car, person-to-person deliberate murder of every single person. Every single individual that perished on that day died of a bullet, a stab, decapitation of being burnt or strangled. The narrative, amazingly, quickly shifted to blaming Israel, injecting false accusations and using moral acrobatics to justify the attack as a reflection of a political movement. But the events of October 7th were not a political movement and have nothing to do with the political disagreements between Israel and the Palestinians. It was, it is part of an evil ideology fixated on the annihilation of the Jewish people because they are Jewish. Of all the involved parties, Hamas was completely upfront about their intentions in the immediate aftermath of the attack, with their own spokesperson openly and gladly admitting that, for the past two years of relative quiet between Hamas and Israel, while Israel thought that Hamas was finally busy trying to govern Gaza, they in fact have been preparing to perpetrate this exact massacre. Not only that, they willfully, if not gleefully, stated that they will not make, will perpetrate such an attack again and again and again and again.
Thank you, Roman. Just take a pause for a second. I'd like to add, well, I have two more speaker slips on my hand. Sounds like more is coming, and I got four hand raised online. I'd like to ask that the public speaker be afforded that two minutes to stick to public communication rules that do not skirt an item that could possibly be coming later this evening. That's all I ask, to have that decorum and that respect and that fairness to be offered to everybody. So with that said, Anne Frank.
Um, this.
Please make sure.
Mayor, we have to reiterate the civility here. If people are not going to be civil, then.
I understand, and I think, I, hold on. Ms. Frank, hold on. I trust that everyone in the audience and our members of our community will exercise restraint and respect to one another, just as I expect this speakers to you. Again, I reiterate, I want to make sure the comment that you make do not skirt an item that is sort of coming up agenda item. Ms. Frank, two minutes.
So I have this nice document in front of me. I'd like to just read a little excerpt of it. This is from the city of San Jose, and I'd be happy to email this to you guys, too, because it's not very interesting. So it says the background. The city council is sometimes required to take action on matters which lie outside the scope of its jurisdiction. There being better and more appropriate avenues of communication between citizens and other governmental entities, the city council desires to restrict its own deliberations to problems which most immediately affect the government of the city of San Jose. The purpose of this document, to provide guidelines for the city council's consideration of a request for action upon a matter over which the city lacks jurisdiction or substantial influence, and to preserve public time, resources, and deliberation for those matters upon which the city council's decisions have direct and concrete consequence for the city. So here we have the city of San Jose that has, this happened in 1979, my goodness, so they've been standing by this, and it's been working really well for them. So this is a policy they have to basically not focus on foreign affairs, things that only affect what's going on in their city. So I'm here to formally ask the city of Millbrae to consider placing on agenda an item to adopt a similar policy where you would not discuss foreign policy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Next up is J. Cat. I will say, if I, if I deem that the public communication is good and item on the future agenda, I will stop the speaker. Please, Mr. J. Cat.
Good evening, council.
I understand.
I just want to say that.
Go ahead.
All things start local, and then they move up to the federal government, and what you guys are doing here is the proper thing to do. Don't listen to these people. They're just.
Oh, hey, hey. Public decorum, please. Public decorum. So this is the 8 o'clock hour. This is already at this point 8:03, and all the public speaker slip for item number 10 must be delivered at 8:00 p.m., so we're closing, accepting speaker slip for item number 10. Gail Grinsell.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Gail Grinsell. Oh, sorry. You want me to start at the beginning? Okay. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Gail Grinsell. I live at 1310 Millbrae Avenue, and I would like to request, please, that every speaker who comes to speak give their name and address so that we can know where they reside. Thank you.
Thank you. Order, please. Okay, we have five speaker online. Your language, please.
First speaker is Gabby, and Gabby, if you could please state your full name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Gabby Maxson. I'd like to speak about my personal recent experience with antisemitism. Couple of weeks ago, as my family and I were leaving our synagogue, we were met on a Purim, which is a Jewish holiday, by a large group of hostile protesters that, for some reason, were there outside of our synagogue, our Jewish house of worship. My children both began to cry and wanted to leave through the secret exit of our synagogue that was offered to us. Would you imagine that Jewish house of worships have to have secret exits in order to protect patrons praying for their families? Most recently, I put a large Star of David in my window. It happened to be garbage day, and the following day, after living in my home for 16 years having two garbage cans, my garbage cans were stolen. I don't know. Perhaps maybe it wasn't because of the large shiny Star of David that I put up in my window after October 7th, but perhaps it was. I have personally already experienced a large increase in antisemitism, and I can only imagine for my family how much more pain we're going to have to endure in the upcoming months. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. Elect.
Next speaker is Val, and Val, if you could please accept a mute.
Hi, thank you. Dear council members, I really want to draw your attention to an issue that often goes overlooked. overlooked, the involvement of city councils in foreign affairs. While it may seem to be not noble to engage in global matters, I believe that our primary focus should be on pressing needs of our local community. Our city councils are elected to serve the people within our city limits, addressing issues such as infrastructure, education, and public safety. By diverting attention and resources, our tax money towards foreign affairs, we risk neglecting the very problems that affect our citizens on a daily basis. From my observation, discussing issues in the Middle East brings nothing but safety. Look at how divisive our community is. Let us not forget that we have limited resources at our disposal. While global issues undoubtedly have significance, we must prioritize the needs of our local constituents first and foremost. Your Jewish constituents are suffering, and we're asking for you to help us combat antisemitism that has skyrocketed in our county. And in conclusion, I urge you to refocus its efforts on addressing the pressing issues within our community. By doing so, we can ensure that our residents receive the attention and support they deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Val.
All right, next speaker is Navad. Please accept a mute.
Hi, my name is Nadav. I urge the Milbrae City Council to refrain from discussing any resolution regarding the Hamas-Israeli-
Stop, we need to stop this comment. If you wanted to opine on an item or the future agenda item, I expect you to come back at a later time. We will give everybody a fair opportunity to opine on the future item. Please. I already said that before. Yes, it's item ten. Navad, we will have, everybody is going to have a fair shot at it. Okay? All right, next speaker.
Next speaker is Esther. Please accept a mute.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to say that having had friendships for decades with Arab-Americans in Milbrae, I don't believe that the fellow who accepted the recognition of the Arab-American month, whatever it was called exactly, I don't remember, who then started speaking about the point of the resolution, I don't believe that he was speaking for all Arab-Americans in Milbrae, and I just wanted to make that point for the city to recognize. He was not selected for that purpose, yet he acted as if he is speaking on behalf of all Arabs or Arab-Americans or Arab-Americans in Milbrae. I think that that's not true.
All right, next speaker is Yvonne Jenna. Please accept a mute. Speaker.
Hi. Hi. I want to urge the council to stay local and not engage in the international issues in general. You don't have the jurisdiction despite what other people would say, and it leads only to the very negative effect on the Biden administration and the relationship of the United States to the other countries in the Middle East. It has a very negative effect on the, the Arabs in the Gaza Strip that people in the room are so desperately supposedly trying to help. So please stay local.
Thank you for your comment. I think that's the end of public comment online, and I think I'm done with speaker slip. So this is the end of public communication tonight. Moving on to consent calendar, item number five, approve by motion the quarterly investment schedule for the second quarter of fiscal year 2023 to '24, and item number six, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance for electronic and paperless filing of Fair Political Practices Commission campaign disclosure statement, which is, it's already been adopted in the last, first reading has passed in the first, the past council meeting. Does anyone on the council want to pull any item from the consent calendar? I'll entertain a motion, if any.
Motion to approve agenda item five and six as stated by the mayor.
Okay.
Pappen second.
Pappen second. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin.
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of five zero.
Thank you so much. We don't have any public hearing tonight. Going on to existing business, number seven, adoption of a resolution setting certain policy applicable to the July 23rd, 2024 special recall election. City manager, please.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce our city clerk, Ms. Elaine Tran, for the staff presentation.
Good evening, city council. My name is Elaine Tran. I'm the city clerk and the election official for the city. Tonight, I am presenting the setting certain policies applicable to the July 23rd special election. These policies are to set the numbers of words for the officer's statement and the deposit requirement. At the last city council meeting, the city council issued an order calling for a special election to be held on July 23rd, 2024. In accordance with Election Code 11327, an officer whose recall is being sought may file a statement with the elections official to be sent to each voter in their district with the information, the voter information guide. The statement may include the named officer's education, qualification, however, it cannot include any party affiliation or membership or activity in a partisan political organization. The statement must be filed with the city clerk no later than five P. M. on April 26, and the statement cannot be changed, but it can be made, can be withdrawn until five P. M. of the next working day after the close of filing date. Similar to a regular election, the city council may set a number of words for the statement from two hundred to four hundred words. The city council has traditionally limited the statement to two hundred words. Election Code 13307 permits the city council to require a deposit with a statement filing. Staff is proposing a deposit of four hundred dollars, which is the estimate per rated cost of printing, handling, and translating the statement in voter information guide for mailing with the ballot. In the event of overpayment, the city will refund the assessed deposit amount or invoice the officer for the difference. So tonight's council action is adopt a resolution setting the policy applicable to the special election with the number of words for the statement and the deposit requirement, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Elaine. Question from councilwoman Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. City clerk, in elections past, in a, when a candidate applies for, or puts in their statement, it is available for the public for twenty-four hours, isn't it, to review if there's any inaccuracies?
That's correct. There is a public examination period, and, um, I believe the examination period is a ten calendar day public examination.
So, um, I support that from my old days. I used to have to check candidate statements and catch the misuse of a particular group that I was with. So I, I'm glad to hear that. This is the one statement in an election that has to be truthful, unlike mailers that come in. With that, I'd also like to see the number of words. I know historically we may have been at two hundred. I'd like to see it move to four hundred. I think that's fair because incumbents already have more power, and if you're running as a new person against an incumbent, this is their one chance to tell the truth and to do it in a reasonably inexpensive method. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Councilwoman Pappen.
Yes, this is not an election. This is a recall. I think we should stick to the standard that we've always had, which is two hundred words and the given fee here. I believe that's reasonable. We've done it in the past, and I think we need to stay to that, and if I'm president, I would like to make that motion.
Thank you. City clerk, I have a question. At the 2022 election, from which the two current council members that is under the recall, what were the word, what, what were the number of words being allowed in those elections for a personal statement?
Two hundred.
Were there any objections then?
No.
Okay. So that was the same policy at which those two council members were being elected from, correct?
Yes.
And then the deposit requirement is strictly coming from the county, is that correct?
The estimate is from the county.
Right, so that's, we're not making any modification on that. It's just based on the cost of producing these personal statement as estimated by the county elections office.
That's correct.
Okay. So from that standpoint, I think it's fair to say, we'll get to that in a second, from that standpoint, I think it's fair to say what has been done in the past, there was no objections. I think it's the same tradition can and should carry forward. That's my opinion on it. Councilwoman Schneider, and then after that, Ms. Kaylin, did you have a comment? After, okay. Ms. Schneider first, and then Ms. Kaylin, and then we'd like to go to public comment.
I appreciate the comment that if we use two hundred in the 22 election, we use two hundred now. However, this is my ninth year on city council, and this is the first time we've ever talked about the number of words in a candidate's statement. So if, if we go to two hundred because this is the same as the 22 election, then we would need to come back for the elections for 2024 and debate the issue of the number of words on that. I, I hear what you're saying, and I can see the consistency in that.
Right.
But I can also say that this is the first time we've ever talked about the number of words, and let's change it now for perpetuity.
I got you. So if I may just clarify, if I may just clarify with legal and also the city clerk, has it always been in the past that every election that we have an opportunity to change the number of words on the personal statement?
Yes, that is correct. There are certain procedural requirements associated with every election, and every time you have an election, whether it's a special election or a general election, what will come before you is calling the election, the date, what will come before you is how many words, candidate pays, and the issue of whether, whatever issue to be on the election can be consolidated with others. These are all procedural issues that are presented to the council with every election. You may have missed it, Councilmember Schneider, because in a general election, there is a procedural resolution where the number of words is, is combined with other actions.
Usually I don't miss that, but I likely do. Obviously do.
Yeah.
Ms. Kaylin.
The, you know, I understand the standard for our regular elections, but this is not a regular election. It's a special election, and different dynamics are at play, and I, I would advocate for allowing the candidates up to four hundred words.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Pappen.
Yeah, again, I think to be consistent here, I don't know what the recall looked like, I was not a part of that, but I believe that had a limit in when they gathered signatures as well, and I do believe there may be some sort of a conflict of interest with people that are being recalled voting on this. You know, there's a personal interest in the outcome here. So I'd like to get an opinion on that, and I believe I made a motion as to the two hundred and the current, keeping it specific. Thank you.
I got your motion there. We'll take some public comment unless there's further, and then we can come back to the council. Mr. Michael Kelly. Yeah, please, go ahead, get ready, and then legal can comment on that.
Okay, thank you. I would like to comment on Councilmember Pappen's comment that those who are subject to the recall have a personal interest here. The issue is whether they have a financial interest that precludes them under the law from voting, and I would tell you, no, that is not present here. These are procedural issues, and yes, some people might prefer two hundred or four hundred words, but when council members run for reelection, they always weigh in on this very same issue when they are voting on these procedural actions for reelection. So this has been going on for years, for decades at Milbrae, that people whose name will be on an election, who will have a personal interest, are voting on the procedural issues connected with an election that come before the council for every election. There is no conflict that is legally recognized here, and there is no legal basis for the recallees to abstain or recuse.
And if I may.
Go ahead, move your right.
We, we're going to have a discrepancy, because I do believe there's an attorney general opinion which states perceived conflicts are sufficient, so we'll have a discrepancy along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. I will say, and I'll get to that in a minute, Mr. Kelly. From my point of view, I look at consistency based on how you have acted in the past and how you continue to act. To me, that is an important part of the consistency that we all value. If at the 2022 election, when the council member first getting elected, there was no objection to that, why should there be an objection today that is different than it was a year and a half ago? So that's a question that I thought the public and also all of us should be entitled to an, some sort of an explanation if a change is warranted. So to that end, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you very much, Mayor and esteemed council. I'm still Michael Kelly, and I would like to urge council to make the change. This is a special election. It's not 2022. The reason, the rationale for the recall, despite my visions or views of what really led to it, the officials, our, our council members serving, have the opportunity to describe the actual, so we need an informed electorate. What's a couple hundred words? It seems like some members of the council want to limit the ability for them to present themselves and their case when they've been maligned and falsely accused with hypocrisy. It's, it's atrocious. To add up to four hundred words seems to be a reasonable approach, and we need an informed electorate. Please consider going with four hundred. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Tran, do we have any online? I don't see any hand raised.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Go ahead. Mr. Albert Yam, go ahead.
Hi, council, uh, council member. I'd like to make a comment. The election code actually refers to two hundred words as the default. There might be an opportunity for exception on four hundred words. I understand, um, that's why it's being talked about right here, but I don't, what I don't understand is that, um, how is, how is the, and, you know, from everything what I, what I've heard, the candidates are, um, you're trying to make an exception for these two candidates. So I would like to know the ground for that. The standard protocol according to the election code is two hundred words, so I would like to know based on what ground you want to make that exception. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yam. I, I will make one comment before I make my decision as to which way to go. I, I think in this case, whether it's a special election or a general election or midterm election, our constituency, our voter appreciates transparency, and at the same time, they appreciate consistency. From the time you are elected up until the time you defend your own seat, whether it is through a recall election or a reelection in that case. If I'm seeking my own reelection, I would certainly project my consistency to my voters so that they understand who I am, what I stand for, and why I am doing what I'm doing. So to that end, I think that level of consistency actually helps the public to build trust with our own elected official. So to that end, I will second a motion to keep it at two hundred words.
Mr. Mayor, the vice mayor has his hand up.
Please, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, um, I'm really indifferent, because I believe, you know, whether two hundred words, four hundred words, you can, you know, you can wordsmith just about anything, but in this case, with what I've heard, I do believe a big reason why we're here today in dealing with this is because of our electorate- is because of our electorate being ill-informed, misrepresented, and so I do believe that it benefits our community to be well-informed, and it's our job as elected officials to ensure that our community is educated, informed accurately with the truth in order to make a decision. To my colleague's comment of conflict of interest, it's almost like the pot calling the kettle black when a few weeks back or a few meetings back where you have very clear individuals lobbying for a mayor at large, knowing very well that they would be running for that position, so that's a conflict of interest if you want to go down that road. And so, so let's be above the fray. Let's have the vote, and we support however the vote goes, whether it's 200 or 400.
Appreciate the Vice Mayor's comment, I'll give you a chance to redirect, I promise. Just as I explained earlier today, that I expect good decorum from the public, I expect the same from my own council as well, in all front. I just want to make sure everybody on the same page, and then we'll get to you in a second. We'll go back to a redirect from Councilwoman Papin, followed with Councilwoman Anne Schneider. Please.
Thank you, yes, I would just like to be clear. We were elected with 200 words, all of us. It has been standard 200 words. I believe, I'm not sure, again, that the signatures collected for this recall were 200 words, or I can't imagine they'd be more than that, but I don't know for sure. But consistency here, I think, is important. We are not doing this for future elections or anything like that, this is specific. We have always had 200 words here. I think we need to keep this perspective, and note too, every time somebody has their ballot statement in there, they also have a reference to a website where the voters can get additional information, should they so desire. There are ways to get additional information, you can link to Warren piece if you'd like, but there is, this is the standard that we've maintained, I don't see a reason to change that at this point in time. The voters can get information from many different candidates and their responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Papin. Ms. Anne Schneider.
So clarification, the motion in second is adoption of the resolution as it is written in the staff report.
For 200 words, correct.
The conflict I have is everything in the staff report is fine, the 200 words, I understand that. I do think though, with the cost of elections, so that the next time this comes to us, we need to talk about that. Having just been through an election myself where there was no paper copy of the candidate statements anyway, and that was $1,600 or $2,600, there's an issue to how we can get more people running based on how much it costs to be a candidate, and that's a discussion for another time, I see that.
Yes.
I don't want to vote no, because I think everything that City Clerk did is fine, and voting no is a perception that I don't agree with it when I do. I would prefer that we vote on everything except the 200 forward, 100, and then we do a straight vote on the 200, 400. But if, if the maker and the second won't do that, then we are where we are.
Okay, all right, any further comment from anybody? Okay, we have a motion on the table for the 200 word, but there is a second on the table. Would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
City Clerk, I'm sorry, no.
Okay. Councilmember Papin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahill.
No.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
No.
Mayor Feng.
Yes.
The motion fails.
The motion fails, and then we can reopen the discussion for alternate motion.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
The alternate motion would be to accept the resolution as written with one change of moving the number of words to 200, from 200 to 400.
Point of clarification, would that also change the price? It would, so you'd, it's written as 200 because that's the cost of producing 200.
It's an estimate.
It's an estimate, but it would be higher.
It would be, it could be higher, yes. It would be higher.
I mean, we can clarify the motion by saying it will be the deposit required by the county.
As required by the county, whatever that is.
Yes.
Fair enough. Would the maker of the motion agree to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Hold on. Do we need clarification from staff? All good? Okay, good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second from Councilwoman Cahill? Any further comment, discussion? Okay, go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
No.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Feng.
No.
Okay. The motion passed by a vote of three to two with Councilmember Papin and Mayor Feng dissenting.
Thank you so much. Of course, yeah, that wraps up item number seven. Item number eight, General Fund Budget Study Session Presentation Fiscal Year 2024 to 2025 Operating Budget, and we have the city manager, but before we get there, I'd like to announce that I intend to take a little recess after this item so that we can tally all the speakers' slip, and then make an announcement to the public as to what our plan is for item number 10, just so everybody understands, just a short recess. Mr. Mike Sung.
Vote. We're going to go? Okay. All right.
Total? Forty-seven. Speaker.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Mike Sung.
My apologies.
No worries.
Mouse working.
We're ready for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members. Today we'll be talking about the General Fund Budget Study Session, this is our preliminary budget, and it's going to be our operating budget, we're going to come back next week to talk about some of the other funds and the CIP or the capital budget. So for our proposed general fund summary, we've actually looked at two separate scenarios for revenue. Scenario one, we're looking at about $42.4 million for 2425, and scenario two, we're looking at $39.3 million, which is about $3.1 million less, and that actually includes a loss of VLF or property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee, which the state could possibly hold on to or withhold, as well as fire assessment, which we had talked, I believe was mentioned a little bit earlier during the council meeting, and that's approximately about $1.8 million as well. On the expenditure side, we're looking at about $41.3 million, and pursuant to our reserve policy, we're looking at additional reserves of about $200,000. Over the years, the general fund has accumulated a fund balance, and the fund balance at the end of 2324 was $12.7 million, and this was exclusive of the reserves, which at 15% is approximately $6 million. So if we're looking at this for 2425 as it stands right now, the reserves are anticipated to increase to about $6.2 million due to the reserve requirement and the increase in the general fund posed. Revenue, as I mentioned before, the total revenue is projected to be about $42.4 million, and a major portion is property tax and assessments. This really is subject to a lot of variations, such as the VLF allocations and the special assessments I had talked about as well. One of the brighter spots we've been looking at is the transient occupancy tax, and the estimate for 2425 is going to remain approximately at about $9.6 million or about 23% of the total general fund budget. TOT is rebounding faster, at a faster pace for us than it is for, it seems, the rest of the county. Sales tax represents about 8% of the general fund, and it continues its recovery. Currently, the sales tax revenue is estimated at approximately $3.3 million. And then, continue on with the revenue piece, licenses and permits are expected to be higher as we're looking at several large developments that continue to progress through, redevelopment of Office Depot site, El Rancho, ALCS Building 3, which I believe Icon's going to be occupying probably around spring of next year, and also the Longfellow Biotech Campus Building. Rents and interest, city is projected to receive one-time payment of about $200,000 for the electronic billboard that's proposed over at the water pollution control plant. We're also going to get some ongoing lease and billboard revenue share as well, and our investment income is correlated to the Fed fund rate, and that's actually increased significantly in the last couple of years of, as you've seen, the Fed fund rate has increased quite a bit. Our Just for Services also now is going to include an amount paid to the city by commute.org, approximately almost $104,000. That's because we're going to be providing city fiscal agent services for commute.org. So expenditures. So the total general fund expenditures is projected at $41.3 million. One of the key things we're looking at is that public safety costs are increasing by about $2 million. So in fire services alone, we're looking at about a $1.4 million increase. So from that, part of that is CCFD or Central County Fire Department, that's going to account for about $700,000, and then the other portion is actually from the CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability, also known as the UAL. So the cost of police services are also increasing, it's going up by about $600,000, and that's, a portion of that is the sheriff's contract, as well as the CalPERS pension cost for police as well. So for expenditures, this is going to offset by a decrease of $1 million in building services. There are ebbs and flows when it comes to building, there's a cycle that happens with that, and we believe there's going to be a little bit of a decrease in expenditure costs next year. We're also looking at a slight increase in transfers out, and what this really is, is a little bit more for storm, and that's going to be offset with the removal of our police remodel loan. So the police remodel loan happened back in 2010, around that time, it was a 15-year loan, and it sunsetted last month, that's the last time we had to make a payment on that, so that's a quarter million dollars that disappearing forward. It's good news there. We also have sufficient reserves in both the unemployment fund and workers' compensation fund for 2425, so we're not recommending actually putting in funds for those two funds for next year. So here's a quick overview of what the general fund actually looks like, you can see where the amounts are. As regards to the revenues, you can see what the property tax and assessment amounts are, the percentages, you'll see that property tax makes up the biggest share, that's very common for most cities, almost all cities in California, I believe, their largest share comes from property tax. Our next largest portion is actually TOT or transient occupancy tax, so we do very well with transient occupancy tax here, and then a third of the taxes is really the sales tax piece. So here's the actual listing for the general fund sources, actually broken out the property tax assessments, so you can see what we're talking about, the special assessment for fire, and also the property tax VLF. So the property tax in lieu of the VLF, that amount there that you see, there's a portion that the state could withhold, and that's actually based off of a pretty complicated formula that depends on how many basic aid versus non-basic aid schools there are in the county. But this is something that isn't just something the city of Millbrae is facing, it is actually something the entire county is facing. In fact, we are coordinating with the county office as well as the other 20 cities in San Mateo County, and we're going to send a letter over to the state, to the governor, notifying them of our position. This is something that is not unique to us, there's two other counties right now, there's Alpine and Mono as well that are dealing with this, and probably very shortly, our neighbors to the south in Santa Clara County is probably going to be looking at this as well. So this is definitely something that's going to... Yes.
Okay, and our assembly member is working hard to try to get that money back for us?
Yeah, we appreciate that. So now I'm going to talk about the expenditure distribution here, and you can see that police and fire make up a little bit more than half, this is also pretty common for most cities, public safety is usually approximately half or a little bit more, and then the rest of the makeup is public works, general government, parks, community developments. So you'll see that for the expenditures, you'll see that fire is increasing by quite a bit, police increasing as well, a lot of the fire piece, as I mentioned, is actually the UAL, and it's in combination with the actual CCFD increases, well, the actual CCFD increase is actually 7.4%, so just so that people kind of know where that's actually coming from. And here, we have a graph talking about the property tax distribution. I think it's important to know where our property tax money is going, people don't really generally know where the property tax goes to, and so this graph kind of depicts what it looks like for Millbrae. A lot of cities are different, but these are generally the ranges that you'll kind of see. What you're going to see here is we only get a little bit less than 16 cents to every property tax dollar. So if you're looking at the ad valorem or the 1% tax, the city, the city of Millbrae itself is getting a little bit less than 16 cents per dollar. You'll see that if you add up the education groups, they get about half, and then the county gets 28%, they get a pretty good chunk of the property tax dollars itself. So just as an example for the property tax distribution, you can see if you have a, let's just say you had a $2 million home, and the ad valorem, which is 1%, is 20,000, the city shares about $3,157. You'll see that a lot of other entities actually get a bit more than the city on the property tax in itself, and this is just the general fund portion in itself. If you look at like the school systems, you'll actually see that they get bonds as well, and that's a little bit above and beyond, but just so people kind of know, property tax itself, it's broken out into a lot of different factors, city gets less than 16% of that. Over to sales tax. So for sales tax, you can see that the sales tax we have here in Millbrae is 9.375%. In the county overall, it's between 9.375% to 9.875%. Half of the cities are at 9.375%, the other half are at a higher rate, they're either about a quarter percent more, two of the cities are at a quarter percent more, and I think eight of the other cities are at 9.875%, which is half a percent more. And those cities that actually have higher sales tax, if it's something that's actually passed by the people, the entire sales tax portion actually goes back to the city itself, so you can actually see that there's a visible difference when you look at that. But just looking at Millbrae in itself, cities usually just get 1%, I highlighted that over here, you'll see that the county gets 1% as well, if you add up all the transit districts, it's another 1.375%. The lion's share goes to the state, the state gets 6% of the sales tax, they get, you know, effectively about 2/3 of the sales tax that you're seeing here. So another little chart just to show how much we actually get, we only get 1% of the sales tax, as I mentioned, and 1% to the county, 1.375% to the transit agencies, and then the state gets the rest, which is the 6% that we're looking at here. So for 2425, we're looking at, we've programmed in about $750,000 in capital, that's like streets, facilities, and parks. We're transferring in about $2.6 million for cost allocation, which is the overhead from some of the other funds, and then for the transfers out, we're looking at three different categories, recreation, bill license, and storm drain here. bill license, and storm drain here. Just a reminder for council goals for fiscal year 2324. We had a bunch of council goals here. Happy to acknowledge that the goals are works in progress, they'll carry over. These are big, long things that usually take longer than one year. I mean, we're looking at for affordable housing, we awarded a contract, we've actually got the certified housing element out now. And for the business improvement district, it's work that we're, it's currently in work in progress as well. For the residential objective design standards, an RFP out for the design firm, east side specific plan, RFP for needs assessment, streamlined permit, also another RFP out. For the empty storefront, I believe that's a pause per council at this point. And for the solar generation, we've actually implemented and are continuing to implement. That's now on the recreation center, and we're looking at solar at City Hall. And for the tree ordinance, I believe that's been introduced recently. It's back to the community for, that was presented, I believe it was last month. So what we're looking at here is the schedule for the next budget sessions. Our CIP, our capital improvement plan is due up next in two weeks at the April 23 session. Then we have a planning commission review of the CIP. It's procedural, it's sensitively scheduled for May 6th. Second session for the operating and the CIP budget on May 14th, and we're looking at having an adoption on the, on May 28th. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mike Sung. We'll start with the council comment and question, and then we'll open to the public. Any of my colleagues? Okay.
First of all, I know budget is really dry for the public, but one of the exciting things is we're getting our first corporate headquarters in there. As a former Hewlett-Packard employee, the value of having a corporate headquarters comes back to the community in many ways. So to the staff, to community development for that work, thank you so much. And thank you also to staff. This, as I stated earlier, this is my ninth year. We run on a really, really lean budget here in Millbrae. There are not a lot of bells and whistles, so when things happen, when outsiders come in and do something that impacts our revenue stream, it feels, it feels hard. Let me rephrase. It is very painful, and it can require cuts. And I don't think we can talk about fire assessment, but how critically important the fire assessment really comes out in the staff report. So I hope everybody that's a Millbrae resident will go and read this report on that, and shows you just how tight our budget is. I had one, I get everything. I'm really glad for the slide that talked about workers' comp. I didn't quite understand that in the staff report. Basically, it's saying, "We're paid up, so we don't have to use any money this year or next year." We're paid up on that. That's great. I'm an injured worker myself, so I have empathy for all injured workers. My question was, because I don't know what it means, what does actuarial liability mean?
So the unfunded actuarial liability actually refers to the cost of how much it would provide to fund, I guess, promises of the pensions from before.
Okay, that's what I thought it meant. So for the public pension agreements made in the past, we are paying for now. So out of that, $2 million for public safety, which is a city council's number-one purpose, public safety, most of it is going to the pension than it is to any increases in salary or things like that. Will we be coming back and talking about any additional staff or any remodeling of infrastructure for public safety? Or is this our one time at that?
So we're continuing to monitor that, you know, on our revenue stream versus VLF and some of the other things that we've discussed this evening, so it's still a work in progress.
Okay. Again, happy to support the amount on there. Just want to make sure that the public understands that. And a huge congratulations to the people of Millbrae. We have paid off a debt. Usually, we would open a bottle of champagne and thank you, but thank you Finance Director Sung and City Manager and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comment or questions for staff? Ms. Haley, go ahead.
Thank you very much for this report. It's great to see the budget on a night that we have so many people here. The budget doesn't usually get this much view, so hopefully, I know everyone came with a primary purpose, but hopefully a secondary benefit is you get to learn more about your city budget, getting more active, engaged citizens. I just had one question in regards to the goals and the carrying over. So the amount next to each of those goals, that's the specific amount for this year? For example, the tree ordinance, I know we spent 75,000 this year. Are we looking to spend another 75,000 next year? For the east side specifics plan, I believe that's like a three-year project, so is the amount listed, the amount of that project for the upcoming fiscal year?
So the amount that's listed on here was the amount that we had budgeted for fiscal year 2324, our current fiscal year. Doesn't reflect everything that's been spent or not spent, it's just an initial amount. Sometimes it could be the full amount, it depends on what's been completed or not, but wanted to show you what we had looked at for last year and where we were actually at with most of these projects, so we wanted to give you an overview.
Thank you.
But like I said, these are big projects, and some of them will carry over.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay. We have one public speaker, Mr. Michael Kelly, and then after the public, and then after public comment, we can come back to the council.
So please forgive me, I was, thought I heard that it's for questions, not public comment, that this, you can ask questions for this.
It is public comment for item number eight.
Great. Congratulations, Mike. You continue to impress. Excellent work. I'd love to hear a little bit more detail around the budget for legal expenses. I know we've spent, as a city, many tens of thousands of dollars on the La Quinta lawsuit. I'd like to hear more elaboration about the TOT doing so well. We keep hearing, oh, Millbrae can't afford to lose a hotel. I'd love to hear how Millbrae specifically, percentage-wise, is comparing to the other parts of the county that aren't doing as well, and really have some meaningful data, so we don't just go on this innuendo and, you know, Chicken Little, "Sky Is Falling." So if you could address what our legal budget is, if this La Quinta lawsuit gets decided in June like it might, it's almost certain to be appealed, so we'll go from tens of thousands to hundreds of thousands, is that budgeted? And how is it going to be managed? So hopefully that means sense. They're all related, but I'd love to hear some specific data about how our TOT is comparing to this year compared to last year, how it's comparing to the rest of the county, and what our best guess legal expenses are be for pursuing this La Quinta lawsuit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other public comment or question? Elaine, I don't see any hand raised online.
There are no additional comments.
Okay, sounds good. We're closing public comment on this particular item. We'll let Mr. Mike Sung address the question, and then we'll come back to the council. Ms. Snyder.
So I think I can address how we're comparing to the rest of the county, maybe to two cities, our neighbors. We don't have everything for every other city. I know for like Burlingame, their budget for TOT about five years ago was approximately 30 million. They're looking at 20 million right now as their TOT, so they're about 2/3 of the way back. You look at San Bruno, they're approximately about 3.5 million about five years ago, they're looking at about 2.9 million right now. So they're about 80% back. Now, that also incorporates that San Bruno had gone from 12% TOT to 14% TOT. So there was an additional change in that aspect, and I believe they actually lost a hotel from 13 to 12 five years ago. So I've data on our closest neighbors. We don't have data on everybody else yet, but that's the comparison that I currently have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sung. All right, we'll have Ms. Snyder first, and then we'll come back to Ms. Papen after.
Just a comment on hotel tax, since we're losing the El Rancho as soon as they can put together their finance package that, on an average year, would bring in 1.1 million dollars. With the loss of La Quinta, that's getting close to 2 million dollars. Where Millbrae is different than adjacent communities is we're 3.2 square miles, pretty landlocked with a major portion that pays no property tax at all because it's owned by public utilities. So SFO, SFPUC, PG&E, BART, et cetera, do not pay property tax. So not that it's my city council hat or job, I am currently working on comparing our neighboring cities, or at least cities in District One, and their ability to recover from a loss of TOT. If you compare us to South San Francisco and Burlingame, both of whom have more hotels, more hotel rooms, and more revenue, they also have multiple other revenue streams that make up a significant portion of their general fund. We do not. So again, it is not comparing apples and oranges on that. A loss of hotel tax to us is more significant than a loss of hotel tax to the other communities in District One. If you are reading the Daily Journal articles, as each city is getting their budget reviewed in the Daily Journal, you'll see that Half Moon Bay is down almost 400,000 in hotel tax, and they were one of the project Home Key Hotels. We have every reason to be concerned with the revenue we have derived from hotel tax. It is significant. It is 25% of our general fund, and those are dollars that can be used any way, they're not restricted to certain funds on that. Okay, I'm no longer on the East Side Specific Subcommittee, but I want the public, one of the exciting things about this East Side Specific Plan is there is a way to monetize nature. When Genentech expands in South San Francisco and they can't do anything to protect plants and animals, if we have a habitat conservation plan, we can accept that money and improve our park and public spaces. This is the exciting part of the East Side Specific Plan, that it will also, if done the way I'm hoping, and that the city manager and I have talked about for years, it's a way to monetize nature. So keep that in mind. Again, I have to credit, I'm a former staffer myself, how creative our staff have been in bringing in new revenue streams, given the severe land that we do not have, or the land shortage that we have, and we all know we can't grow more land. So again, thank you.
All right, Ms. Papen.
Thank you, Mr. Sung. Very simplified, I greatly appreciate that. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Schneider for her comments here. We would like to note, too, that La Quinta is operating right now, so the money is coming in, that is not yet impacted in our budget. They were at like 80% occupancy previously, somewhere along those lines, so a very viable hotel that we are thankful is still bringing in revenue there. So thank you for this summary, greatly appreciate it, and that's it.
Okay, all right. I have some comments. Mr. Sung, could you please explain to us what is the rising cost of our public safety, especially CCFD cost?
So...
I think you have a slide on that a little moment ago, right?
Let me go back to you.
Elaine, I think he's, okay, there you go.
Slide 11. So if you look over here at the public safety costs, if we're going from 2324 to 2425, it's going up approximately 1.4 million dollars. Part of that, about 700,000, is actually from the UAL, the unfunded actuarial liability, but the other half is from CCFD, and CCFD is going up approximately 700,000.
How much again?
700,000.
700,000.
So part of it is regular increases, also part of it is also part of the UAL as well, as CCFD has their own UAL, so...
And what percentage is that compared to the budget? Compared to the previous year's budget?
I'm sorry, what percentage?
Is it a 6% increase, 5% from last year, the increase in CCFD is what he's asking?
Yeah, CCFD's increase is 7.4%.
7.4%, okay. So just for the benefit of the public, first of all, I will commend the staff and leadership of our city manager. We have a balanced budget this year. When a lot of neighboring cities are having challenges with their budget, we've seen them in the newspaper, between San Bruno, Half Moon Bay, and some of the other cities were having shortfall on their revenue, and that having a little difficult time trying to balance the budget. And yet, we work so hard, such a lean budget, we do more with less, and we are, we take economic development as a priority and try to, because we know that these costs are rising every day. And so we're thankful that our sales tax revenue, our TOT revenues are up this year as we expected in this upcoming budget. That's not by happenstance, that's because we work hard at it, and yet, we met the challenge of rising costs of public safety, especially CCFD and some of the other costs associated with it. So it is vital to us that the TOT that we're relying on to a certain degree, I think it was 22% on some of the pie chart that you showed a moment ago, it is vital to us as a community to keep our residents and our community safe. So I want to be sure that we keep these things in perspective as we look at how well we do on our TOT, how well we do on our sales tax. That's needed so that we can continue to offer public safety to our residents and keep people safe. So, but also, at the same time, I want to commend the staff for all the work you do for the past year in keeping all of us above water. It's not an easy task. It is, it doesn't just happen, it's because a lot of people work really, really hard at it. So to that end, city manager also, is it stipulated in CCFD contracts somewhere that there's an annual increase, and how does that compare to the actual coming in?
Yes, Mayor, so the basic provision is a, is an automatic 3% increase with a provision above 3% that would be authorized by, by the city manager in the contract. So the, the average, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, CCFD is approximately 9% a year on the average here in and you're out?
It's 8% to 9%.
Yeah, 8% to 9% is what it's been consistently.
So it's higher than the anticipated increase stipulated in their annual contract?
3%, 3% is what has been anticipated, and yeah, will have a flow because we did have some significant increases in '22 and '21.
Okay, so I think there, yeah, there need to be a conversation there as to how to bring these costs back more in line with expectation, because as we try to expand and strengthen our tax base and our tax structure, we're trying to offer the best service we can to our residents. And we want to obviously make sure we bring these costs in line with expectation so that as we move forward, we have a better control on our budget. Your question? No? Okay, all right.
Mayor, on that, I will come back again, because as, as the schedule suggests, we'll be coming back. We'll, we'll show what the history has been, and I think that'd be helpful because I think having history is critically important.
Absolutely, frame of reference.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else? The Vice Mayor, do you have anything? Nope, okay, all right. Councilwoman, Schneider.
Only because the mayor brought it up, the cost of us caring for the unhoused by BART and the new program that's rolling out that I don't know if we've officially received, if the Board of Supervisors have voted on that, could you come, and would that be a capital project, the new Measure K dollars coming in for the facility on the parking lot by the BART station? So we'll see that in two weeks?
Well, it, it's kind of a, depends. So some of it's operational in the general fund, so the revenue that we receive from grant funding, but also the allocation in the general fund is operational, so operational maintenance general fund. The capital cost of the interim facility, if we do receive that grant, that would be on the capital budget side.
Okay, and just for the public, the city has applied and is, is awaiting funding to put a temporary building in the city parking lot behind Peter's Cafe to assist with caring for the unhoused that are pushed into Millbrae by the multiple transportation agencies, including SFO, on that. I think with the mayor's permission, if we get the data, the more specific data for CCFD, could we get the cost outlined of what we're doing at the BART station?
Most certainly, we'll bring that back as well.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Move approval.
We got a move, we got a motion from Councilwoman Papen. Any seconds?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Vice Mayor. Any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
Item number eight, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Okay. Thank you so much. As I promised, I will take a five-minute and then as I count all the speaker slips here and then we'll come up with some announcement after this. We'll make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Perfect. We're calling this meeting back to order. We'd like to ask people if you're standing, if there's a seat. I'd like to ask you to sit down. Yeah, okay. So let me just make a quick announcement. If everybody can sit down. All right. Thank you. So a quick announcement. At this point, I counted 47 speaker slip on item number 10. All right. 47. We don't know how many is going to be online as they're coming in. I'm hopeful, barring unforeseen circumstances, and I can reevaluate it when it gets to it. I'm expecting everybody who would have an opportunity to speak, up to 30 seconds per person. Just have an expect... Just have an expectation. If we have six... If 47 is here and if I get 10, 12, 15, that's 60 plus. If everybody get 30 seconds, that's 30 minutes. So... Hold on. Hold on. Hold on. I don't have a hand from Councilmember... Do you have a video on him? Mr. Vice Mayor? Okay. There it goes. Okay. All right. So that's my initial expectation at the moment because we want to make sure this can be done efficiently, expeditiously, and in orderly fashion. Okay. Whoa, whoa. Hold on. This is not a time for questions yet. And then I can revisit that as we get closer to the item. But I just want to set the expectation. Everybody has a chance to speak, and we'll do so fairly for everyone. Okay. So we move on to item number nine. Mr. City Manager? Oh, um, that's right. You're right here. This is to discuss the... And provide direction regarding a request to reduce single-use footwear as an action item. And I believe this is an item by the request of the Vice Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like for you to address the council as to what you would like this council to take action on and a discussion on.
Yes. Much like the next item, this item was recommended and supported by me as members of our public suggested or requested. I am not aware of any of these young people being either present or available. But this was regarding the reduction of single-use footwear. Do you have information in your package regarding our current ordinance around regulating the use of disposable food service ware as well as efforts by being aligned with the county and additional information regarding upcoming legislation that will impact that? So I don't know if there's any comments from council or from public, but this was an attempt to allow these individuals that requested us to act to have this discussion. It's been agendized. And if there's anyone here that would like to have a conversation on the matter, they can do so at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Anne Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor. The young people from Mills are part of an environmental group of students from across the county on that. And I believe when they came to the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee that they weren't talking about the existing ordinance, but they were talking about the use of single-use plastic items inside our restaurants on that. So I think the staff report is excellent. But I think that that's that step that we could begin a conversation with the county about. Basically, for the public, that means plastic spoons and forks. That means ketchup in condiment containers, none of which are recyclable. And the new state goals are to try to reduce what ends up in the landfill. And right now, the biggest problem from plastics in general is microplastics entering into the environment and entering into our bodies. So when I looked at that, that's my interpretation of what the young folks said at an MCAC meeting was... And I'll use one of my favorite restaurants here in Millbrae, Peter's Cafe. We adore them. When you go and get food, they will put the fruit in a little plastic cup, and the plastic cup gets thrown away. A simple solution is no plastic cup. No. That's called source reduction on that. So maybe when I read the staff report and I'm looking at our staff member, our Director of Environmental Programs, we can work a little bit more with the county on in-house education. I go to restaurants all over Millbrae trying to watch that. I don't want to pick on any Millbrae restaurant. But we've got some truly compostable straws and some of the old straws. We've got compostable packaging, some of this. I think a little bit of work with our restaurants would be warranted. And maybe you could... We could report out at Community Enhancement Advisory Committee what is the current education that the county is providing to our restaurants, not restaurants in general, but to Millbrae. My gut feeling, sorry, San Mateo County, I don't have a great deal of trust with the county right now, but my data analysis of grants is a lot doesn't get spent up here. And the staff report talks about the grant program. And I would be very curious to know if any of that grant funding has gone to any of our own restaurants. My studies right now in grants is very little. Across the board of grant programs come to Millbrae. So that's just my recommendation on this. We can move it back to MCAC to look at reusables in the restaurants. The rest is under the current ordinance.
Okay. Any other comment from any other council members? Councilwoman Papen.
Yeah. I applaud... Millbrae has been the lead in so many things here. I don't believe, I think, appreciate the activism of our younger community, but we've really been doing a great job. And yes, we can do more here, but I didn't think that this needed to be agendized here. We are moving ahead and will continue to do so. We were the first to ban polystyrene for foam, plastic bags. We've been really leading the whole way here. So again, I think we need to kind of rethink when the public make specific comments without the background knowledge of exactly what we've done. And I think we can inform our residents more so what we got here. And as I noted, we can always do more. And hopefully, I know we will. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Schneider.
Councilwoman Papen brought up plastic bags. I know that's not the agenda item. But because we were the first in the county, we're not part of the county program, which means when they come in and do enforcement or permit checks, they are not checking plastic bags in Millbrae. That's another thing that could go to MCAC for review and to find out because I've had people from County Health say, you know, in Millbrae, we don't look at plastic bags because we're not part of the county ordinance. So something to investigate.
All right. Thank you. The Vice Mayor, do you have anything else for us on this item?
No.
No. Okay. So we'll take some public comment. I think I saw seven hand raised. I just want to make sure that they are indeed for this item. Can you please confirm, City Clerk?
All right. Speakers online on Zoom. I want to make sure that you guys are speaking on items. Item number nine, which is about reducing single-use footwear. And the...
Okay.
Okay.
All good. All right. So is there any other further discussion on item number nine? Seeing none? So item number nine, it's completed as it stands. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just for accuracy and the record, it is an action item. So if there's a motion just to receive the report, I think that that would be appropriate just to follow our...
Fair enough. Is there a motion to receive the report?
I would make them... Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor made a... The Vice Mayor made a motion to receive the report as stated.
Would you be open to a sec... A friendly amendment?
Of course.
Would you refer this back to... Accept the report and refer it back to MCAC?
Yes.
Thank you. A second.
Okay. We have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilwoman Anne Schneider. Any further comment? Oh, yes. Ms. Papen, John.
MCAC has already approved their work plan. And so I just wanted to make a comment. I don't know how we bring that back when they just had their work plan approved.
Yeah. I was thinking the same thing. We'll work on it.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. We're calling this meeting back to order. We'd like to ask people if you're standing, if there's a seat, I'd like to ask you to sit down. Uh, yeah, okay. So, um, let me just make a quick announcement. If everybody can sit down. All right, thank you. So, a quick announcement. At this point, I counted forty-seven speaker slip on item number ten. All right, forty-seven. Um, we don't know how many is going to be online as they're coming in. Um, I'm hopeful, barring unforeseen circumstances, and I can reevaluate it when it gets to it. I'm expecting everybody who would have an opportunity to speak up to thirty seconds per person. Just have an expect, just have an expectation. If we have six, if, if forty-sevens here, and if I get ten, twelve, fifteen, that's sixty-plus. If everybody get thirty seconds, that's thirty minutes, so. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I don't have a hand from council member. Do you have a video on him? Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor? Okay, there it goes. Okay, all right. So, that's my initial expectation at the moment, because we want to make sure this can be done efficiently, expeditiously, and in orderly fashion. Okay, whoa, whoa, hold on, hold on. This is not a time for questions yet. And then I can revisit that as we get closer to the item. But I just want to set the expectation, everybody has a chance to speak, and will do so fairly for everyone. Okay, so we move on to item number nine. Mr. City Manager? Oh, um, this is, that's right, you're right here. Um, this is to discuss the, and provide direction regarding a request to reduce single-use footwear as an action item. And I believe this is an item by the request of the Vice Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like for you to address the council as to what you would like this council to take action on and a discussion on.
Yes, much like the next item, this item was recommended, um, and supported by me, um, as members of our, uh, public suggested, requested. Um, I am not aware of any of these, uh, young people, um, being either present or available. Um, but this was regarding the reduction of single-use footwear. Um, you have information in your package regarding, um, our current ordinance around, um, regulating the use of disposable food service ware, as well as, um, efforts by being aligned with the county, and additional, um, information regarding upcoming legislation, um, that will impact that. So I don't know if there's any comments, uh, from council or from public, but this was an attempt to, um, allow these individuals that requested us to, to act, um, to have this discussion. Um, it's been agendized, and, um, if there's anyone here that would like to have a conversation on the matter, they can do so at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Anne Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor. The young people from Mills are part of an environmental, um, group of, of students from across the county on that. And I believe when they came to the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, that they weren't talking about the existing ordinance, but they were talking about the use of single-use plastic items inside our restaurants on that. So I think the staff report is excellent, but I think that that's that step that we could begin a conversation with the county about. Basically, for the public, that means plastic spoons and forks, that means ketchup-in-condiment containers, none of which are recyclable. And the new state goals are to try to reduce what, um, ends up in the landfill. And right now, the biggest problem from plastics in general is, uh, microplastics entering into the environment and entering into our bodies. So when I looked at that, that's my interpretation of what the young folks said at an MCAC meeting, was, and I'll, I'll, I'll use one of my favorite restaurants here in Me, in Millbrae, Peter's Cafe. We adore them. Um, when you go and get food, they will put the, the fruit in a little plastic cup, and the plastic cup gets thrown away. A simple solution is no plastic cup. No, that's called source reduction on that. So maybe when I read the staff report, and I'm looking at our staff member, our Director of Environmental Programs, we can work a little bit more with the county on in-house education. Um, I go to restaurants all over Millbrae trying to watch that. I don't want to pick on any Millbrae restaurant, but we've got some truly compostable straws and some of the old straws. We've got compostable packaging, some of this. I think a little bit of work with our restaurants would be warranted, and, and maybe, um, you could, we could report out at Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, what is the current education that the county is providing to our restaurants, not restaurants in general, but to Millbrae. My gut feeling, sorry, San Mateo County, I don't have a great deal of trust with the county right now, but my, my data analysis of grants is a lot doesn't get spent up here. And the staff report talks about the grant, um, the grant program. And I, I would be very curious to know if any of that grant funding has gone to any of our own restaurants. My studies right now in grants is very little across the board of grant programs come to Millbrae. So that's just my recommendation on this. We can move it back to MCAC to look at reusables in the restaurants. The rest is under the current ordinance.
Okay. Any other comment from any other council members? Councilwoman Papen.
Yeah, I applaud, Millbrae has been the lead in so many things here. Um, I don't believe, I think, appreciate the activism of our younger community, but we've really been doing a great job. And yes, we can do more here, but I didn't think that this needed to be, um, agendized here. Uh, we are moving ahead and will continue to do so. These, but we were the first to ban polystyrene for foam, um, plastic bags. We've been really leading the whole way here. So again, I think we need to kind of rethink when the public makes specific comments without the background knowledge of exactly what we've done. And I think we can inform our residents more so what we got here. And as I noted, we can always do more, and, um, hopefully, I know we will. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Snyder.
Councilwoman Papen brought up plastic bags. I know that's not the agenda item, but because we were the first in the county, we're not part of the county program, which means when they come in and do enforcement or permit checks, um, they are not checking plastic bags in Millbrae. That's another thing that could go to MCAC for, um, review and to find out, because I've had people from county health say, you know, in Millbrae, we don't look at plastic bags because we're not part of the county ordinance. So something to investigate.
All right, thank you. Um, the Vice Mayor, do you have anything else for us on this item? No, okay. So we'll take some public comment. I think I saw, um, seven hand raised. I just want to make sure that they are indeed for this item. Can you please confirm, City Clerk?
All right, speakers online on Zoom. I want to make sure that you guys are speaking on items, item number nine, which is about, um, reducing single-use footwear, and the.
Okay, all good, all right. So, um, is there any other further discussion on item number nine? Seeing none, so item number nine, um, it's completed, as it stands. Okay.
Miss Mayor, just for accuracy and the record, it is an action item, so if there's a motion just to receive the report, I think that that would be appropriate, just to follow our.
Fair enough. Is there a motion to receive the report?
I would make them, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor made, Vice Mayor made a motion to receive the report as stated.
Would you be open to a sec, a friendly amendment?
Of course.
Would you refer this back, just accept the report and refer it back to MCAC?
Yes.
Thank you, a second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilwoman Anne Schneider. Any further comment? Oh, yes, Ms. Papa John.
Um, MCAC has already approved their work plan, and so I just wanted to make a comment. I don't know how we bring that back when they just had their work plan approved.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. We'll, we'll work on it. There will be an amendment to MCAC's work program if they decide to recommend an amendment and accept that.
Unless it falls under their first work plan item, which is to advise City Council. Could we fit it under that?
Education.
We'll review and bring it back.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So can we have a roll call, please, on accepting the report and referring it back to MCAC?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
Item number nine passed by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, item number ten, discuss and consider directing staff to draft a ceasefire humanitarian resolution related to the current event in Gaza. Action, before we get started, first of all, I wanted to thank the members of the public who has been here all night. You've been excellent, you've been respectful, you've been very kind and very patient, and I appreciate all of that. And we will get through this item as, um, expeditiously and as orderly as possible. I will re, I will evaluate as the time goes on, how much time we can allow every member who have turned in a speaker slip and online to be able to speak on this item. My goal is to get to each and every single one of you equitably and fairly. So with that said, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, this is an item that you had requested to be placed on the agenda within sixty days. I have done so, and, uh, if you would, please, let us know, let the members of the public and this council know as to what you would like for this council to act on and discussion on. Please.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, greetings, everyone. Um, this item is before the council for discussion and consideration as a result of numerous requests from multiple Millbrae residents during public comment over the past three to four months. Making public comments preclude council members from responding directly to comments, yet the ground act allows council to direct staff, uh, to respond or to follow up. Um, after numerous, uh, attempts, there had been no responses or follow-up, um, from regarding this request for the item to be placed on the agenda. And after what I believe was the fourth, uh, request, I asked, uh, that among other requests that we just addressed on item nine and previously at, uh, council meeting, that the council agenda is this item for a future meeting. Uh, one of three requests is this. Um, over the past few weeks, council supported our Palestinian communities by having all members attend a prayer and peace rally. Following our council protocols, this item was placed on the agenda for discussion tonight. And leading up to this meeting, council members have received communications from community members of Millbrae and beyond on both sides of the issue. I personally have made myself available for both our Israeli and Palestinian communities here in Millbrae. I hosted one meeting, uh, with our Israeli community members, and at their request and the acceptance of our Palestinian members of Millbrae, we held a joint meeting over the weekend. While the conversation was very productive, there was no consensus on postponing or working together on a unified statement in favor of a humanitarian ceasefire resolution, free of rhetoric or discussion of international politics. As many have emailed us, let us focus on Millbrae issues, I would like to say that it is my belief that creating opportunity, access, and responding to marginalized residents here in Millbrae is our business. As we begin discussion, I would like to express my support of our Millbrae Israeli residents and share in their condemnation of Hamas during the actions of October seventh. It is not that I don't believe your voice has merit, rather, my lived experience of seeing hate face-to-face my entire life and that of my ancestors, that I must also see the humanity and the need to uplift the voice of our Millbrae Palestinian neighbors as what I do for one, I guarantee I will do for another. I no more condone anti-Arabic Muslim sentiments than I would antisemitism. Whatever your stance, just because someone does not agree with you does not make them any wrong or deserving of disrespect, insults, or victim of harassment or hate, and it should stop. For those that want to harass or be hateful, let them begin with me. In closing, let us all serve as a model of a community coming together to see each other and not see past each other, exercising humanity, spiritual maturity, compassion, and remember that those that hate do not need any motivation to do so. Let us find ways to remove any barriers before us tonight that may stop those of us who love to show our love. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I turn it back over to you for consideration and direction of staff to draft a humanitarian-focused ceasefire resolution for future consideration of our council.
And is that your motion, Mr. Vice Mayor? Well, he, well, he did ask for the resolution to be drafted, to be brought forward in the future.
Be, just to be clear, um, I am open to council, um, shift, or addressing this, um, resolution and this motion, um, that's being presented, um, tonight.
Okay, so you are making a motion, okay. Um, questions and comment from this council before I open up for discussion to the public? Councilwoman Cahalan.
Just as we begin public comment, these aren't my thoughts on this agenda item yet, but as I look out on all of you, I can see pain and discomfort in all of your eyes. I know that so many are hurting and struggling, that we have generations of trauma that we bring together here in this room. And I've also already heard each other make comments about each other's comments, right? And so I just, I know Millbrae, I know our community, I know how loving and kind that we are, that we work together, we shop together, our kids go to school together. Um, as each other speak tonight, I just, I, I ask that we can, just through all of these challenges, see the dignity in each other and treat each other with that basic respect as each gets their turn to speak. Um, and so, uh, I, unfortunately, I, I see folks rolling their eyes at me as I say that. Um, but I, I just hope we can have that basic integrity and respect for each other. Um, you know, if there's, you know, never mind, um, I just, I hope that we can do that, that despite our differences, despite our different agreements, as we listen to each other speak, we can recognize the faces of our brothers and sisters and see light, know that it's, know that it's day and not light, night, because we can see the faces of our brothers and sisters here in Millbrae in the city of the sun. So with that, um, I, I think the only other thing I want to say before we start public comment is, I know time is significant, and I know people came to speak. Um, it's hard for me to think of what people can really say in thirty seconds. Um, I, I think at least a minute is reasonable to ask folks who've come out and spent all of this time tonight. Um, and I don't know if that has to go to a vote of the council, but.
Okay, is that it? All right, Councilwoman Schneider.
Thank you. Um, again, I want to thank everyone who's here tonight and everyone, whether you're from the city or not, who sent in so many emails over this time. I especially want to give thanks to Jonathan Minser of the JCRC Bay Area. Um, public may not know, but after October seventh, I was mayor then, and Mr. Minser and the JCRC helped me prepare a statement that both, um, shared our collective loss of the, of the events on October seventh and our hope for all of our residents on that. And then to let you know that in addition to all the emails, I asked earlier if I needed to say this, but I did receive an email from Rabbi Fetter, and I had a conversation with him today. I've been trying to collect as much information as I can from all parties, understanding, and, and I, I'm very grateful for the rabbi for spending time with me today, um, as well as the other people that I've talked to on the phone, or the email exchanges I had with a handful of people from all of those emails on that. And, and how to balance what we can and cannot do in a city where safety is our first requirement with that. So I, I'm here to listen with you. This has been horribly hard on all of us, um, where we want to reach across and love all of you in this very difficult situation. And, um, I appreciate Councilwoman Cahalan, um, we're here to listen, um, and do the best we can. With that, I'll shut up.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Papen, do you have any comment before Cupid? Okay, thank you. So, um, this is where I come in to make a decision. Um, I've got forty-seven speaker slip and fourteen hand raised online. I'll cut it off right here at the sixty, fifteen now, sixteen, seventeen, all right, seventeen. So that's, um, sixty-four. I will honor the request for one minute each, and that's a little over one hour. But I expect and I request sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, that everybody be respectful, be cordial, be kind to one another, um, and please, no commotion, and everybody gets a chance to speak in an orderly and equal fashion. So if people can help, um, just help line up one after another so that we can get through this expeditiously and fairly and squarely. First, Maha Yasa Shaddam, excuse me if I'm not pronouncing your name properly, my apology. Um, and then followed by Janine Kari. Sixty-second, Elaine, please.
Good evening. My name is Mahan. I've been a Millbrae resident in District One for the past forty-eight years. It is where I grew up. I went to all my schooling here, I raised my kids, and I urge you to pass a permanent ceasefire resolution. It is imperative that local leadership reflects the collective voice of our community in advocating for peace. Anyone with a fiber of humanity can agree that ending violence and wanting peace is not divisive. It's not complicated. Killing children is wrong. Bombing hospitals, schools, and religious institutions is wrong. Killing aid workers and blocking aid to starving people is wrong. For the past six months, through Easter and Ramadan, we've been haunted daily by horrific scenes of unimaginable suffering and no end in sight. Imagine you and your children being forced out of your home, having to walk to safe zones, knowing your whole family can be wiped out at any moment. Imagine the trauma, the fear in your kids all while be, being starved. Wouldn't you want people to speak up and, and do whatever it takes to stop it? We are in pain as a Palestinian Millbrae resident. Undirectly impacted.
Thank you, understood.
Stand with humanity, please.
Janine Kari, followed by Jimmy Shamaya.
Hello, Millbrae City Council, my name is Janine Kari. I'm a Palestinian lifelong Millbrae resident. I attended Millbrae Nursery School, Meadows, Taylor &amp; Mills. I was lucky enough to have access to education, food, water, and beyond basic necessities. We unfortunately can't say the same for the children of Gaza. Israeli government now murdered over fifteen thousand children in six months. More children killed than all worldwide conflicts combined in the past four years. Over seventeen thousand children have been labeled WCNSF, wounded child, no surviving family. If the children of Gaza do not die from carpet bombing, they have died from starvation. If they have not yet died from starvation, then the likelihood of their survival is slim, considering Israel is targeting and murdering aid workers. When you think of the children of Gaza, imagine the children of Mowbray, the children of Mowbray Nursery School, Meadows, Taylor &amp; Mills, as I was, and vote to draft a ceasefire resolution to show that Mowbray stands on the right side of humanity. Ceasefire now, thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Shamaya, followed by Tamara Roche.
This is not a Palestinian resolution, because if it is, if it was, it would call for an end to the occupation, cutting US aid to Israel and bringing Netanyahu and his extreme right-wing government to justice. This resolution is a compromise focusing solely on basic humanitarian needs. Criticizing policies or questioning positions taken by the Israeli government is not antisemitic. It is our right, it's our duty to confront injustice, and in this case, genocide fearlessly. Divisiveness is killing people. Divisiveness is the destruction of hospitals and places of worship, and it's the intentional starvation of the population, not in our call for a ceasefire. Your support for a ceasefire embodies unity and acknowledges our shared humanity. Remember, you were elected to heed our, your constituents and to lead, not merely to tend to local tasks.
Thank you.
Now is the time to lead, guided by the voices of those you represent.
Tamara Roche, followed by Elijah Shamaya, please. Ms. Roche? Okay. Are, are you Tamara? Okay. Followed by Alice Robinson.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend the councilmembers and the mayor and the city for recognizing the Armenian genocide, bypassing a resolution, uh, declaring April twenty-sixth as an Armenian Day. This is not a local issue, it is an international issue. So therefore, the history of this community, this council has always taken a stand to help and support people that have been subjected to genocide in the previous years. So therefore, this resolution also is a resolution that is needed in order to support those individuals that have been facing genocide for the last six months, and to help those people that have been under occupation for the last seventy-five years. The.
Thank you, Mr. Shamaya. Alice Robinson, followed by Angelina Burri.
Good evening, my name is Alice Robinson. I am a Jewish American and a Peninsula resident since 2018. I'm asking you to pass a permanent ceasefire resolution. I'm horrified every day at the destruction of Gazan lives and society, as well as by attempts to silence calls for basic human decency by conflating them with antisemitism. The proposed resolution holds no threat to the safety of the Jewish community, and instead upholds the most fundamental value I believe we all share, respect for human life. In my horror over the genocide in Gaza, I also draw comfort that so many of my neighbors have united around this core value and are working for a more just future. So many of your community members have lost loved ones in the genocide in Gaza, and rather than being able to grieve privately, they must instead come out time and again to call on our leaders to recognize their basic humanity, and I'm glad to support them. I urge you to pass the ceasefire resolution, thank you.
Thank you. Angelina Burri, followed by Noah Abdallah.
Hello, everybody, my name's Angelina Burri. I'm a senior at Mills High School and a board member of Banassa Alliance at Mills. As I stand before you today, I am deeply moved by the urgency for a ceasefire in Palestine. For the last seventy-five-plus years, we have been silenced. As a Millbrae high school student, I come and ask of you to take in consideration our emotional connection for the young innocent children and their innocent lives, who have tragically lost their families, homes, sense of safety, and in thousands of tragic cases, their lives. Their cries echo in our hearts, their innocence shattered by the brutal reality of war, of war. I implore each one of us to realize the gravity of this situation. We have the power to make a difference. Let us act now to end this cycle of suffering. A ceasefire is not just a political strategy, but a humanitarian imperative, a crucial step to save the lives of those vulnerable children. I urge you to join me in the calling for an immediate ceasefire, to protect these innocent lives and to ensure a future where every child can grow up in peace and security.
Thank you.
Ceasefire now.
Noah Abdallah, followed by Steve Weiss.
Assalamualaikum, peace be upon you, peace be upon you all. My name is Nur Abdallah, and I'm a senior at Mills High School. As a Mill, Millbrae local, I love my hometown and only want the best for it. I'm sure you all feel the same. I also care deeply for my other hometown of Ramallah in Palestine. For those of you that aren't. For those of you that aren't aware, Ramallah is one of Milbury's sister cities. This means that as Milbury residents and council members, you all also have ties to Palestine. As the land and people suffer, worst of all in Gaza, it is only right for us to stand with them in their time of need. This is undeniably a local Milbury issue. So I'm asking you to do the right thing and pass this Gaza ceasefire resolution here in Milbury and let our partners in Palestine know that we have not abandoned them. Also, despite what the opposition ignorantly claims, local actions are not at all insignificant as they grow to contribute to national and international impacts. You have the opportunity today to sign Milbury's name on the right side of history, to show your humanity, and to play a part in a growing movement to end the slaughter of Palestinians in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Weiss, followed by Ronnie Rose.
Counsel, please do not agendize this divisive resolution. Tonight, you demonstrated your domain expertise with regards to the budget. Now, with all due respect, do you have that level of expertise in Middle Eastern history and politics? Or did you learn a little about this in the last six months, like a lot of people, myself included? Did you know Hamas has rejected every ceasefire proposal to date, including last week? Israel has proposed a permanent ceasefire. If Hamas, all they have to do is release the hostages, if any are still alive, and surrender peacefully. Hamas refuses. A resolution for a one-sided ceasefire is a resolution for unconditional surrender to a terrorist government by a US ally. This is an international issue that does not fall in the purview of the city council and, like in other cities, will lead to a rise in antisemitism.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ronnie Rose, followed by Shamir Tota.
This resolution will not change any international ceasefire as the Hamas is objecting any ceasefire attempted by Israel and the US. Nobody here is asking for peace or return of the hostages. Milbury will bring more antisemitism and hate to this city if this resolution passes. Personally, I was pushed to the ground last week in a pro-Palestinian demonstration. My flag was taken away from me, and so was my sign. There was no peace, no talks, just aggression, smoke bombs, burning Israeli and American flags. As a teacher in a Jewish school, we are having cops at all times in my school, and we are borders and fenced in. One of the pro-Palestinians members here, I don't want to point him, but that's what he said last time. If you're antisemitic, you are not doing enough.
Thank you. Shamaya Tota, followed by Mark Hirschman. Please, please, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mayor and member of the council, I'd like to make a request. Need two minutes.
One minute, please. Everybody get the same.
I know, but I'm the elderly with the Palestinian community here. I think I deserve two minutes.
Sir, one minute, please. Everybody be the same. I appreciate the understanding.
I think I know all of you. I met with you on many different occasions and celebrate happy activity, culture, and for all the ethnic community. We are here for ceasefire in Gaza. Why? Why we need ceasefire? I met with many different people, public officials in different cities. Some city approved ceasefire, and some where the council were divided.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Hirschman, followed by Stacy Hirschman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. During the ten years that I was honored to serve on the Milbury City Council, we received numerous requests to address international issues. The council was asked to weigh in on conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan and on China policy. We have recognized that often these issues were critically important to many, if not all of us. And certainly, for those with loved ones in harm's way, there might be no more important issue. Despite our strong emotions, we declined to place those items on the agenda. The tenor of our politics may have changed since I sat on the dais, but the city's jurisdiction remains the same. Resolutions outside the jurisdiction have no place on the Milbury City Council's agenda. As our elected civic leaders, you have invested with the trust by the citizenry to address those myriad matters over which you have direct jurisdiction. I urge you to uphold that trust and continue to focus your attention and our limited city resources on the very important and difficult work of building a strong, vibrant, safe Milbury community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Stacy Hirschman, followed by Jay Cat.
I'm stepping forward to implore the council to be very careful about setting a precedent that none of us will want to live with. No matter your position or your pain in the current Middle East crisis, taking up this resolution will open the floodgates of worldwide grievances. Members of our community come from all corners of the globe. We care about many things. Sadly, there's plenty of pain and enough conflicts around the world to consume every city council meeting for years to come. How will you become informed enough to grasp the complexities? How will you determine which ones are worthy of your concern? How will you have time to fulfill the responsibilities for which you were actually elected? I don't question intentions, but I question the wisdom of moving in this direction. I fear that the proposed action will set into motion perpetual divisions and continued conflict in our community while yielding no benefit or having a positive impact on the situations that are of such grave concern.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Jay Cat, followed by Tamim Najjar.
Good evening. Please agendize a ceasefire resolution. Tonight, one side is here advocating for peace while the other is advocating for the continuation of murder, murdering women, children. Think about that. As Palestinians, we are Semitic by blood, unlike the Zionist imposters here tonight. Now allow me to educate you all. You are allowed to criticize and disagree with Zionism and the pariah state of Israel. Neither is antisemitic. Supporting a ceasefire is not antisemitic. Don't listen to the Zionist propaganda. The world has awakened, and they're taking notes, and you should too. It's simple. Either you stand with humanity and the sanctity of human life, or you don't. There's only one side to be on during a genocide. And I'll say it for you, ma'am. If you've never been falsely called an antisemitic, you're not working hard enough. Thank you.
Please, 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 everybody. Please, no commotion. Tamim Najjar, followed by Katie.
Good evening, everybody.
Please, hold on, stop, stop.
Good evening, everybody.
Hold on one second, hold on one second. I'll give you a full minute, don't worry. I want to make sure everybody understand that we need to stay focused. No more commotion, no emotion. Just let everybody speak in a peaceful and respectful way. That's all I ask, everybody. Please, please, please. No, 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 we're not taking any comment right now. All I'm saying is I would like for everybody to stay cool, be respectful to one another. You're going to hear things that you disagree with. You're going to hear it. So same respect from the speaker as well as the audience. That's what I'm asking. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tamim Najjar. I live in Milbury. I just encourage the city council to adopt the ceasefire resolution. Please, for peace, for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Katie, followed by Senia Baumann. My apology if the name is not being pronounced properly.
Good evening. My name is Katie, and I'm a Milbury resident and a proud Latina. I stand before you today to appeal to your humanity and to state that supporting a ceasefire resolution is supporting life. This is not a political position, but rather a human one. And as a Latina, my history and roots are deeply tied to the sanctity of life. I don't have a dog in this fight because I'm neither Palestinian nor Israeli, but I am a human, as are all of you. And as a human, we all have an obligation to protect life, all life. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baumann, followed by John Mafara.
My name is Zainabulum. I'm a freshman at Mills High School, and I've lived in Milbury my whole life. And I support the agendizing of an enduring ceasefire because millions of Palestinians have been displaced and have had their basic human rights taken from them. People, just like me and you, have had no food and have been forced into a famine and have had no clean water. Women have had to use tent scraps for their periods because there is no aid. There is no clean clothes. There is nothing for these people. This movement is not dangerous. It does not endanger anyone. The people of Palestine are humans. This is just a thing of humanity. This is not antisemitism. This is not Islamophobia. This is just, are you human? Do you have empathy? Can you understand what others are going through? While around a thousand...
Thank you. Thank you so much. John Mafara, followed by Tagrit Shamaya.
Good evening, council. Just wanted to mention that a few weeks ago, we had a vigil. It was a great vigil. Seeing some of the comments made from that vigil was pretty heart-wrenching. Displaying a sense of humanity, your ethnic background for people that are suffering was pretty gut-wrenching. So just wanted to say that we're all here for the sake of humanity. We would like to stick together, and we would like to systematically say no to annihilation of a public that is suffering, not only people that are alive, but desecration of graves. They've reduced the removal of sixteen cemeteries in Gaza. They not only want to systematically remove Palestinians from Gaza, but not only the living, but also the dead. So we just want to be here to get an understanding and go for humanity.
Thank you, John. Tagrit Shamaya, followed by Stephanie.
Good evening, council members. I was born and raised in Milbury. I went to all Milbury schools growing up. And for the past eight years, I've been a second-grade teacher here in Milbury, the city in which I grew up in. I see the flame of peace burning in my students' eyes every day. They understand the power of humanity, just like the countless others around the world. And now it's our turn to turn... And now it's our turn to fan that flame into a beacon. This ceasefire resolution offers Milbury a chance to step into the circle of communities pushing for humanity and empathy. Imagine sending a ripple of humanity from this council to our classrooms and outward, proving that a city like ours can embrace ideals like humanity. Think of the impact on our children, on future generations, watching their city prioritize peace. I believe they will be proud to call this the place where bridges of understanding were built and humanity was prioritized. Let's agendize this resolution, council members. Let Milbury be the echo that amplifies the call for a more peaceful world. Let's be the generation that shows the next, yes, humanity does have a voice.
Thank you, Ms. Shamaya. Stephanie, followed by Michael Kelly.
This isn't about my feelings. This is about a US-funded genocide. This is a plea to save lives. Here's some quotes from the people of Gaza. "I try to breastfeed my daughter. What she drinks is blood, not milk. I cannot produce milk now due to malnourishment." Speaking on the city of Khan Yunis, "It smells like death. I can't even feed myself to properly feed my child. The boy is losing more weight than he gains." Since the first day when Israel declared the cutting of our water supply, we knew we would stop having water coming from our tap. It's happened many times before, but we never thought it would continue for six months. Today, my entire life has been set aside. Life has stopped. The only thing ongoing here is death. We cannot plan for our next day. How can I plan for my future, where I would study or what I'd major in, when I'm not even sure that I will survive? Thank you.
Thank you. Next to Michael Kelly, followed by Marsha Meyer.
Thank you very much. Everyone knows who I am. I'm appalled by the violence there. And it's just horrific. I believe the Israeli government is criminal. I believe Hamas is an evil force. I think there's blame on both sides. I think we need to come together as a community, the people that know me here. I've struggled and fought and done a lot of community work to bring people together. I'm one of the co-founders of the Anti-Racist Coalition. This is very personal to me. I have close friends from Ramallah. My wife and I met at Phil Japper's coffee shop. He throws parties for us before his health went bad. I serve with my Arab friends on the Lions Board, biggest volunteer organization in the world. I also have two nephews that are Israeli and Jewish, and they're ridiculed in their school because they don't want to participate or walk out. So my plea would be that we...
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, that we come together as a people and...
Marsha Meyer. Michael, please.
To live in harmony, thank you.
Marsha Meyer, followed by Devante.
Greetings, everybody. I'm Marsha Meyer, and I've lived in Milbury for fifty-four years. So I think that's a record for anything I've heard tonight. I'm going to read some breaking news from Israel that came in that I think means has an impact on the resolution offered tonight, that there's no need for it. Because negotiations have been brought to the table. They've been brought... Israel worked with many other nations, and it's been turned down by Hamas. This is what it was. Hamas has rejected Israel's latest proposal in the ongoing negotiations for the release of the hostages. The latest proposal reported, including a six-week ceasefire, the release of nine hundred Palestinian terrorists from Israeli prisons, including one hundred serving life sentences, and the return of six thousand Gazans to the northern part of the Strip. And this was all for exchange of only forty Israeli hostages, which would not include IDF soldiers. According to a report in Israeli Channel Twelve News, Hamas claims it doesn't know the locations of the forty hostages.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you.
Devante, followed by Ali Ramadan.
Good evening, city council members. I'm here to support passing a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. It's been six months since this genocide's been happening,[1671.02] It's been six months since this genocide's been happening, and one point million Palestinians are trying to survive. Over thirty-five thousand have been killed, fifteen thousand have been children, and the ones that are trying to sur, trying to survive are going through diseases, infections, and starvation. I wanna urge that this is not, this is a local issue. Because our tax dollars are funding this genocide. This is not divisive. Passing this resolution, you would be standing firmly for the Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim community and their allies. You'd be standing firm with humanity and also for justice. Again, ignore the opposition. This is, this is so important, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Davante. Ali Ramadan, followed by Amina. Ali left, okay. Um, Amina, followed by Linda K.
I am here asking you today to vote yes to a ceasefire resolution. Number one, we've been divided, literally divided. Just go check out the apartheid wall. Any excuses that this resolution creates division is just a cop-out. Number two, we are not foreign affairs. We are your constituents. We are your local issues. Palestinian Millbrae residents are asking you to see and hear them. Do not brush them off as foreign affairs. Number three, we are asking you to, we are not asking you to solve any foreign problems. This resolution is a symbolic gesture to your community and the city that you serve. Number four, what is so wrong with standing with the oppressed? What is so worrying about opening the floodgates to stand with more oppressed constituents in your city? And number five, there's not much more to say. If witnessing a livestream genocide the last six months have not convinced you, then I worry about your humanity.
Thank you, Amina. Linda K, followed by Janine Ramadan.
Good evening, Council. My name is Linda. I grew up in Millbrae and I'm a Mills High School graduate. Thank you for agendizing a ceasefire resolution. Thank you for not, for choosing not to silence our voices because a small minority refused to hear inconvenient truths. Unfortunately, antisemitism continues to be weaponized to silence voices promoting human rights and an end to war and violence. In my view, there is nothing more important for us as US citizens than ending the US-funded mass slaughter of children. It is our tax dollars that have financed the bombs that have murdered their parents, doctors, teachers, and the list goes on. Their homes have been decimated, their lives shattered. As we helplessly witness this devastation, our own emotional and mental health deteriorate. I know I've felt it and I've seen the toll it has taken on my fellow community members, especially our youth. And I don't want them to grow up in a place where the leadership of their home cities didn't stand against the livestream genocide of innocents in Gaza. Please vote for a ceasefire resolution. It's the least we can do. It may not stop the bombs, but it would restore a sense of humanity to our communities.
Thank you, Linda. Janine Ramadan, followed by Nicole Han. So it's Nicole Han, followed by Aliyah Salem. I assume you, Nicole?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thanks. All right. Good evening. I'm here to ask you guys to prioritize passing a humanitarian ceasefire resolution. Mayor and Council members, our shared humanity binds us, making it crucial to acknowledge and advocate against any threats to human life. As someone guided by my conscience, I'm here to actively denounce the ongoing genocide and take action rather than waiting a century to issue a proclamation to honor the innocent lives lost. As a city, we must not remain silent while our country faces moral decay and collapse. In this revolutionary time, there's no normal, no excuse for old rules to govern the atrocities we witness. Mayor and Council members, your community is hurting. What will you do? Please note that a ceasefire resolution is not divisive. What is divisive is silence during a genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Aliyah Salem, followed by MJ.
Good evening. My name is Aliyah Salem and I'm a resident of District Two in Millbrae and a volunteer for two local Millbrae nonprofits. I'm here on behalf of my family who sent their comments via email as well. California, in cooperation with cities across the state, send six hundred and ten million dollars of our taxes annually specifically to fund the Israeli military. So this is absolutely a local issue. No matter what religion or creed we espouse, it's never wrong or harmful to call for peace and an end to indiscriminate killing, especially when we are the ones paying for it. You will never regret supporting the end of killing innocent babies and children. Ceasefire now.
Thank you. MJ, followed by Lani Cat.
Hi, I'm MJ and I'm a resident of San Mateo County. Um, tomorrow I'm gonna be fifteen and that is my privilege. Because for so many children in Gaza, they don't have that privilege of having another birthday. It is my privilege to be alive and to be healthy. It is my privilege to not be among the fourteen thousand children who have been martyred. You don't need to be Muslim, Arab, or Palestinian to show solidarity with Palestine. You just need to be human. And if anyone can't see that, then I mourn their humanity like I mourn the forty thousand now gone. In order for something to be gone, it has to have once been here. That's forty thousand now unable to continue the lives they once had. Tomorrow I will be fifteen and that is my privilege. All I want for my birthday is a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you, MJ. Please, please, thank you, MJ. Lani Cat, followed by Ed Musa. I appreciate all of your patience.
I'd just like to say before I begin, without the, uh, without breaking precedents with the Civil Rights Act, absolutely none of you would be occupying a seat on this council today. No white men are on this council, so be grateful that precedence was broken. This resolution isn't divisive, but killing and starving children and coming here tonight to ask you to do nothing about it is divisive. City councils exist because cities need to take decisive action on divisive topics. Divisiveness is not a valid reason to do nothing. At least fifteen thousand children have been murdered by the Zionist entity. That's seven times the amount of children enrolled in Millbrae, Millbrae Public Schools. The responsibility to address the abuse of children falls on every person who is aware of it. You are aware of it. The children of Gaza can't afford anyone's silence and neither can your soul. In the future, when you reflect on this period of history, will you be able to handle the weight on your conscience if you choose to do nothing?
Thank you, Lani.
Also, Councilmember Schneider, you never said Palestinian. You never said the word Palestinian in your initial comments. Think about that.
Ed Musa, followed by Lena.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Ed Musa, Millbrae resident for forty-nine years. I went to school here, my kids went to school here. I serve here. I'm a member of the Lions, just like Michael Kelly. All we do is try to help people. My goal is always to try to help people. It was terrible what happened on October seventh. Their lives are very valuable, the ones that were lost there. The lives that are dying right now are equally valuable. We cannot take away their lives. We cannot, we, we need to do something to stop this. Chef Andres from the World Health Kitchen, I just saw an interview. He said it has to start local to get the, the next level to go up. So it's gotta start from right here, it's gotta go to the county, to the state, to the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Lena, followed by Samina. Just gonna put out, okay.
Good evening, City Council members. Today I'm here to urge you to vote yes to pass a resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. We are currently witnessing a devastating full-force genocide with over forty thousand Palestinians killed, fourteen thousand of which are children. To put it into perspective on how horrific the genocide in Gaza is, just last month, over two hundred Palestinians were killed in what is now known as the Flower Massacre. Human beings trying to get flour to feed their starving families, that was their only crime. Is there a divisiveness in saying this is wrong? Today, I am here to ask you to listen to us and I urge you to take action. We are simply asking you to advocate for humanity. Millbrae wants a ceasefire. Please follow in the footsteps of other Bay Area cities like Oakland, Richmond, Albany, and, uh, San Francisco, who agendized and passed ceasefire resolutions. As a society, we must think globally and act locally. Global issues impact communities and change begins at a local level. Thank you.
Thank you. Samina Arakat, followed by Nekham Masarw. My apology if I pronounced your name incorrectly. Samina. Samina left, okay. And it's, uh, Nekham Maskawi, followed by Hussein Dawah.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Naram Masarw and I am a senior at Mills and a board of, member of Menace Alliance. Today I stand before you to address a topic that has captivated local attention and evoked emotion, the genocide in Gaza. For the last seventy-five years, Gaza has faced significant challenges marked by violence, destruction, and profound human suffering. Innocent civilians, including children, have endured unimaginable hardships, including lives of their family members lost right in front of their eyes. And with homes destroyed and lives shattered. To put it into perspective, Gaza covers some one forty-eight square miles of land, less than one-third the size of the city of Los Angeles. These circumstances demand our attention, compassion, and commitment to seeking peaceful resolutions. You have the opportunity to do something about this. As people privileged enough to not live under these circumstances, we have a responsibility to educate ourselves about the complexities of such conflicts, to question narratives and to advocate for peace and justice. It is easy to be overwhelmed by the magnitude of global issues, but our collective voice and actions can make a difference locally and globally.
Thank you. Hussein Dawah, followed by Kasan Shamaya.
Good evening, everyone. There is no, an English word can describe the horror stories of the Israeli atrocity against the Palestinian people in Gaza. The images that comes from Gaza, slaughtering children, women, and men speaks by itself. And if these images are unable to move the human sense and feeling, I believe they need and professional attention. There, the continuance of the genocide are not going to achieve security for the Israelis. Make no mistake, there is no security for the Israeli unless there is a security for the Palestinian, free Palestine.
Thank you, Hussein. Kasan, followed by Duran, Manuel Duran.
Thank you, Council. Kasan Shamaya, lifelong Millbrae resident, raising my kids in the house I grew up in, District One. I'd like to ask everybody, without misrepresenting, who supports a ceasefire and lives in Millbrae, to stand up.
Please.
This, this is-
Please, please, please.
This is a local issue. And the people who are standing before you today are Millbrae residents. The people who are speaking to you are Millbrae residents. The people who are asking you to bring this ceasefire resolution forward are Millbrae residents. As elected officials, your obligation is to the constituents and to represent their wishes. And your constituents have filled this room up tonight to ask for a ceasefire resolution. That is what this community wants. So, yes, this is a local issue and I ask you to vote with your humanity, to vote with your conscience, and to support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Shamaya. One more thing, just, yeah. Just try to be as calm as possible, everybody. I understand this is a very emotional issue. I understand, I get it, right? So, we're just trying to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak in a respectful and cordial and civil way. Please. Um, Duran, Manuel Duran. I couldn't, I couldn't see their first name very well, but their last name is D U R A N. If it's not here? Okay, Roman Foschanski, followed by Julius G.
Hello again. Just to address the point of, uh, how this may or may not cause division, uh, during break I was called Hitler by the door. So this is a reflection of how inclusive this, uh, resolution will be. Mainstream narrative, as in a move of mind-bending pyrotechnics of twisting facts and reality, has accused Israel of genocide, ethnic cleansing, and war crimes. To be clear, genocide is what Hamas brazenly attempted on October seventh. Ethnic cleansing is evidenced by the fact that not a single Jew can be found in all of Gaza lest they be executed immediately or are being held as a hostage. War crimes are what's being committed by Hamas at the present by endangering their own civilian population of Gaza by hiding behind women and children who are not allowed to leave, despite the idea of calling, texting, and dropling leaflets in the tens of millions warning the Gazan civilians to get out of harm's way. If Hamas cared about the Gazan civil, civilian population, even a tiny fraction of how much Israel cares for them, this whole situation would have never occurred. This resolution is not humanitarian. It is divisive.
Roman, thank you. Julius G, please, followed by Anne Frank.
Okay, good evening. I'm urging you to vote yes on immediate ceasefire resolution. Currently in Gaza, there are thirty-three thousand people dead, over seventy-five thousand people wounded, and of that seventy-five thousand, fourteen thousand of them are children. Over four hundred people have been killed, waiting for aid to arrive, and at least thirty children have died due to malnutrition. Thousand more are in constant fear of being next. They face famine, violence, and death as they witness their families being lost. I ask that you vote yes for a ceasefire resolution to value community and to stand on the right side of humanity. Do not stay silent and complicit in the face of an ongoing genocide. Please listen to your constituents and ensure the safety of them and their families. Ceasefire now.
Thank you. Anne Frank, followed by Oga Fortenko.
Hello. Um, I think everyone in this room can agree that war is horrible. It's a horrible thing. But what you also have in this room, other than opposition and hate, um, is people wanting virtue. They don't want dialogue here. They don't want peace. People want virtue. If they didn't, why do you think the Palestinian-American community here keeps turning down proclamations and statements that are being offered to them in many cities here? It's about virtue. Um, I'm gonna play something from my phone now.
Thank you for calling the city of Millbrae. If this is an emergency, please hang up and dial nine-one-one. If you know your party's extension, you may dial it at any time. For utility, billing, and finances, press one. For planning, building, and code enforcement, press two. For water, sewer, streets, or parks, press three. For engineering and encroachment permits, press four. For environmental-
Thank you, Anne.
Nothing on foreign affairs.
Point taken, thank you. Oga Fortenko, followed by Habah Noor.
Your personal views on a complex international conflict are not the reason that you were elected. Furthermore, Hamas rejected several ceasefire offers, so any discussions at a city level are an exercise in futility. There are two local polls, which show that ninety-two percent of the people in your community agree that local governments should not weigh in on foreign policy. Considering the turmoil of the recall election in La Quinta, I count on your integrity and foresight to focus on the problems that you have the power to solve. This resolution is not the way to help your community. I request that you follow the example of San Jose City Council and adopt a resolution that states that the council, quote, "shall not act or take position on matters concerning foreign policy of the United States of America, nor its relationship to other countries of the world." Please listen to the overwhelming majority of your constituents and prevent further hateful rhetoric. A foreign relations statement targeting the one Jewish state, two days after the six-month anniversary of October seventh, when a hundred and thirty-two toddlers, grandmothers, and Holocaust survivors are still being held hostage and with, without access to the Red Cross-
Thank you, Oga. Habah Noor, followed by Justin F.
Hello, my name is Habah and I've lived in Millbrae for twenty-five years. Some community members have said calling for a ceasefire is beyond the jurisdiction of this council. Please remember the deadliest weapon on earth is silence, and by not calling for a ceasefire, you are denouncing your responsibility to humanity in aiding the ongoing genocide through complicity. With over forty thousand Palestinians murdered, countless reports of human rights violations, forced famine, documented sexual assaults, and Israel's blatant disregard for the ICJ ruling to stop genocidal acts, it is our moral obligation to speak out now. Palestinians have suffered at the hands of the Zionist entity long before October seventh, since nineteen forty-eight. Zionism has created a false narrative that associates Jewish livelihood at the expense of Palestinian lives and their displacement. I'll leave you with the quote spoken by a Jewish man who coincidentally declined to be president of Israel in nineteen fifty-two, Albert Einstein. "The world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them and do nothing."
Thank you, Ms. Noor. Justin F, followed by Linta Curry.
Hello again, Council. Uh, I'm a graduate of Mills, class of twenty-nineteen. Tonight you've heard a lot of misinformation from those against the ceasefire. You literally only need to Google what they're saying to find out that they don't read articles. Hamas has rejected last ceasefire deal. Do you know why? Because it was not a permanent one. Israel has rejected ceasefire deals where they have offered, where Hamas has offered to release all hostages for plans of a permanent ceasefire, all hostages. It's curious that they don't mention that, that they only mention the facts that they want you to hear. I ask you to question why. Tonight, agendizing a ceasefire resolution means you stand on the side of your many residents who fill this room and on the side of peace. I implore you to do that. And I implore you to ask why they keep con- And I implore you to ask why they keep continuing- why do they keep continuing to misquote and misinform you? It's really not that hard. You could just, you could literally just Google it. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Linda Curry, followed by Susan David. Linda? Okay, thank you. Susan David, followed by Enas.
Good evening. My name is Sebson. I'm here to urge you to vote to support drafting a resolution calling for a ceasefire and restricted humanitarian aid and the release of hostages on both sides. Our community is directly impacted and experiencing immense loss and grief. The absolute horrors two-point-three million Palestinians are experiencing is directly supported and funded by our government. We have the responsibility to take action at every level, starting here. We heard the city's efforts to strengthen sister cities and friendship cities. This speaks to the beauty of this city's commitment to connecting with communities globally. Drafting this resolution reaffirms Milbury's values. This is not a partisan or political issue. This is a diverse community unified to support life, humanity, and peace. Represent humanity and your constituents. Take meaningful action towards an expression of peace for all people. Vote yes to draft a resolution calling for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. David. Enas?
Good evening, Council members. My name is Enas. I'm a Palestinian-American, working in the nonprofit sector, helping communities in Milbury. My family abroad continues to be threatened by the ongoing genocide and humanitarian crisis, which has resulted in the loss of over thirty thousand lives, including more than fourteen thousand innocent children. The numbers equate to more than ninety children per day. Imagine ninety children per day in Milbury dying. What would you do? Bringing this to council is absolutely in your purview. Every single American in this room, whose tax dollars are funding a genocide, if the numbers mentioned do not scream ceasefire now, then what will? In these trying times, we turn to our elected officials seeking solidarity with humanity and urging to pass a permanent ceasefire resolution. We appeal to you, our council, for support, as demonstrated by the solidarity of other cities in the Bay Area to help strengthen our community during this period of grief. Free Palestine.
Thank you. That's all the speakers slip in the chamber. City Clerk, I believe we have sixteen hands up?
Yes, we do, Mayor. The first, which will like me-
Yeah, go ahead and call them one by one, please.
Okay. So, the first speaker is Lenny. Lenny, please accept the unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. My name is Lenny Fuchansky. I'm not a Milbury resident, but I have close family in Milbury and have been spending quite a bit of time there over the past ten years. I encourage the city council to stay local and not to adopt resolutions on foreign affairs. This especially pertains to the exceptionally complex and contentious issue of the Israel-Hamas war in Gaza. This war could stop a long time ago if Hamas surrendered. In fact, it is Hamas that is not agreeing to any reasonable ceasefire deal now. The responsibility is full on Hamas, a vile terrorist organization. What is most concerning is the huge rise of antisemitism. Dear Council members, please make no mistake. Anti-Zionism is antisemitism, because Zionism is a Jewish national movement. A ceasefire resolution at this time will be very hurtful to the Jewish residents of Milbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny.
The next speaker is Val. Val, please go ahead and accept the unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Dear Mayor and Council members, I am deeply troubled by the spread of misinformation and the rise of antisemitism in our community. I'm also absolutely shocked that in the last six months, the Palestinian community sided with the terrorist organization Hamas. Instead of wanting to liberate their own people, it is truly a shame that they chose this path. The ceasefire is asked for is not a true ceasefire. Hamas has refused ceasefire numerous of times. Israel is one tiny place on the entire planet Earth where Jews can escape to. Zionism is an American civil rights movement, and it is deeply hurtful to see Zionism used as the weapon of hate. October 7th was the truest genocide, and it was funded by our tax dollars, because Hamas used these funds to build terror, abuse their own citizens, and bomb Israelis. Let's stand together against hatred and division. Say no to one-sided ceasefire. Release hostages-
Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Grace X. Grace, please accept the mute.
Grace. If she's not ready, we can get back to her. Let's call the next one.
Okay. All right, next speaker is Musa. Musa? Please accept the mute.
Uh, okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Musa with CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations, and we want to echo our friends in the Milbury community in urging you to pass a ceasefire resolution. Forty thousand innocent men, women, and children in Gaza have been killed by Israel, a vast majority of them who are women and children. According to the UN, more children were killed in four months of war on Gaza than in four years of war around the world. Fifty-five percent of Americans disapprove of Israel's military response in Gaza, and half of US adults believe Israel's military response has gone too far. Israel's genocide in Gaza is having a deeply local impact, with twenty-twenty-three being one of the worst years of anti-Muslim hate recorded in CARE's thirty-year history, worse than after Trump's Muslim ban. Palestinians in Milbury who have family and friends in Gaza are experiencing immeasurable trauma. Just as you recognize the Armenian genocide today, which Israel does not recognize, the city of Milbury must recognize the genocide in Gaza. Governor Gavin Newsom recently called for a ceasefire in an open letter to Californian Muslims and Arabs. So, we hope you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Nancy. Nancy, please accept the mute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Nancy, and I'm a Green Hills Taylor and Mills alumni. After thirty-five thousand deaths, with over forty percent of them being children, I would be horrified if there's any hesitation to pass a ceasefire resolution. Anybody who tries to tell you that a ceasefire resolution is antisemitic is not only delusional, but spreading decades and billions of dollars' worth of Israeli propaganda that contributes to the dehumanization of Palestinians. The majority of the world has been calling for ceasefire for months. The president, vice president, and a growing number of congress have finally caught up and are also calling for an immediate ceasefire. This genocide will be marked in history as one of the most defying moments of at least the last century. Anyone with any power or platform will forever be judged with how they respond to this moment. How will you tell your kids and grandkids how you responded? Our congressman has failed and showed that his half a million APAC contributions bought his morality. As your constituents are local, they are your neighbors, and will never forget how you respond. Do the right thing, agendize, and pass this ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Ayem. Please accept the mute.
Um, hello, this is Amisra Al Haye. To the Vice Mayor, is one marginalized community more important than the other? Because that's exactly the message you're sending by bringing this resolution in Milbury. You want to uplift the Arab voices? Great. And how about the Jews? Point-two percent of world's population, do we not count? To the rest of the council members, absolutely no ceasefire resolution should be put on the agenda in our city. The same people proposing the ceasefire resolution here chant outside "Globalize the Intifada", which is the exact opposite of ceasefire. It calls for genocide of Israelis and Jews worldwide. To be clear, genocide is what Hamas attempted to do on October 7th. And based on their words, they will do it again and again and again. And the people who celebrated the Hamas atrocities on October 7th would not have been asking for ceasefire today if Hamas was winning. If you're for ceasefire, you're supporting terrorism to continue. Hamas must be stopped. Demand the hostages back from Hamas. Say no to ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker is Yifi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. This Sunday, I was on a bridge commemorating six months since innocent civilians were taken hostage into Gaza, including babies, women, elderly men. I learned that I was sharing this bridge with relatives of two of the young women still held in Gaza, who were brutally raped on October 7th and, based on testimony from freed hostages, are continuing to undergo sexual assault and God knows what other torment. Using hospitals as military outposts is wrong. Hamas does this. Using underground tunnels for terror attacks and using civilians above ground as human shields is wrong. Hamas does this. Ask yourselves, what is the purpose of agendizing a ceasefire resolution? Of whom would you be demanding a ceasefire? In every city that such resolutions have arisen, the result has been vitriol, including support for Hamas, denial of Israel's right to exist, call for intifada, and outright-
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christine.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm confused, because I don't see a motion actually on the agenda. So, I'm wondering why people are urging you to pass a resolution that isn't even codified. My second point is that I think that's a Brown Act violation. The third point I'd like to make is, all I hear is people are talking at each other, and they're not actually building community. If you want to build something in this community, I believe that you need to look at other alternatives. And before you direct anybody to create a motion based on criteria that's not even listed in the agenda, maybe you could look for another alternative, like creating a peace garden or creating another physical representation of how we can all work to promote peace in our community. This isn't it. The Vice Mayor's motion, or whatever he placed on the agenda, shows his implicit bias, that obviously, he's a crusader for liberated ethnic studies, and he has no understanding of what true genocide really is. Thank you.
Next speaker is Even Gina. Gina? Please accept the mute.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. I have heard, dear City Council, I have heard you earlier today talk about the budget and asking very pointed questions and making Speaker go back and answer questions and going over slides over and over again. However, right now, it seems like you're gonna vote purely on emotion, swayed by a crowd and spitting lie after lie after lie, using words like genocide, left and right, spitting lies about State of Israel. So, I'm asking you, do you have enough expertise to put this item on the agenda when you know nothing about it? Do you know, for example, what would happen to people in Black Kufius if they went into Aza? What would Hamas do personally to them? Because I know answer to that. So, I invite them to vote for ceasefire together with Hamas.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Esther. Esther, go ahead.
Supporters of the agenda of Hamas want this resolution. Hamas's stated objective is to annihilate Israel and kill Jewish people. That's what they mean by "free Palestine" or "from the river to the sea". Even today, Gazans fired rockets into Israel. What is meant by ceasefire is that Israel should let its population get slaughtered. No one of the ceasefire supporters openly supports the right of the State of Israel to exist. Such resolution would violate the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and the Civil Rights Act in favoring Gazans and their supporters. It would be antisemitic in singling out a conflict involving Israel. It would aid the genocidal objectives of Hamas and would be a misuse of public funds. It incites hate and makes Jewish persons unsafe here. Your duty is to protect the local community. Under constitutional law, only the federal government has authority to adopt a policy about a foreign government.
Thank you.
Naba? Please accept the mute.
Hi. I urge the city council to refrain from discussing any resolution regarding the Hamas-Israel conflict. These geopolitical matters are complex and discussed at the highest government levels and should not be discussed at the city level. Such discussions only bring more division within the community. There was a ceasefire on October 6th violated by Hamas, a terror organization who committed horrendous war crimes with genocide intent, mostly against civilians. Hamas is the one rejecting multiple ceasefire deals negotiated at the government level. Hamas continues to shoot rockets at Israel and vows to destroy it once allowed. If you choose to have ceasefire resolution, please bound it by the release of the hundred-and-thirty-three hostages in Gaza and the surrender of Hamas. Please vote no on any such resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker is Shoshana. Wait a quick second. Please accept the mute.
May this council remember the words of the antisemitic individual who spoke tonight about the great pride he takes in being called an antisemite and how those who haven't been called antisemitic aren't doing enough. It is April twenty-twenty-four in Milbury, not April nineteen-thirty in Germany, and these words should strike fear into the hearts of every single city council member in this room of what could happen to this community if you agendize a ceasefire resolution. We can all agree that war is a terrible thing, and we can also agree that everybody wants peace. So, it should come as no surprise that there was a ceasefire on October 6th, a ceasefire that was broken on October 7th, when Hamas went on their murderous rampage, raping, slaughtering, and kidnapping innocent civilians in Israel. I can assure you that the only impact agendizing a ceasefire resolution will have is a continued increase in antisemitic incidents right here in Milbury. Thank you.
Next speaker is Free.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to make a few points here. So, firstly, everybody who's opposed to a ceasefire resolution is literally saying they want peace. If you want peace, wouldn't you want the stop of firing and the stop of killing people? Wouldn't you want that to stop if you want peace? Another thing, fifteen thousand children in Gaza have been killed by the Israeli government. Fifteen thousand. This is a war on children. Half the population in Gaza is under the age of eighteen, meaning most of these people in Gaza are minors. This is a war on children. I'm actually at home right now, and I was supposed to be at this meeting, but I'm very sick, and I have the privilege of sitting in my home and laying in bed and being able to have medication and food and water. The people in Gaza, aid is being deliberate- aid is not being entered into Gaza by the Israeli government deliberately. They are starving people. This is insane, that you say that you want to call for peace, but continue bombing people, civilians. Pass the ceasefire resolution.
Next speaker is Linda.
Hi. My name's Linda Oberstein. I grew up in Milbury, and my family has lived there since nineteen seventy. I'm a proud Mills High grad. I am a Jew, I'm a physician, I'm a multi-faith chaplain, and I am a human. I have empathy. I have my personal beliefs in the world affairs, as does everyone here. I'm sure each of you does also. You, Council, however, were elected based on your desire to serve the city of Milbury. You were not elected because of any personal beliefs, whether political or religious. There's been a four-hundred-percent increase in antisemitism since October 7th. I'm aware daily of my own freedom and safety as I walk around, though always wondering if I will be the next victim of an antisemitic act. Agendizing a ceasefire resolution will simply cause more divisiveness and antisemitism in our city. Please continue to focus on Milbury and keep it the wonderful and safe city it has always been. Please do not agendize the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
The next speaker is Eric.
Hello. Go on. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. So, like, obviously, you guys should pass a permanent ceasefire. And like, State of Israel should not exist at all. I like, I'm not a resident of Milbury, but I've been fortunate enough to attend this meeting, so... And like, I just generally feel like passing a ceasefire is an antisemitic, not supporting Israel is not antisemitic, like, you know, do your research, you know. I don't know what I'm saying, but yeah.
Next speaker?
Next.
Please. Please. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Anna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Anna Sipanenko. Today, several people spoke about children dying in Gaza, but they forgot to mention that the reason all of these children are dying is Hamas. The blood of civilians is on Hamas' hands. And senior Hamas official was asked in the interview- And senior Hamas official was asked in the interview, since we have built 500 kilometers of tunnels, why haven't you built bomb shelters? And he answered that it's the responsibility of the United Nations to protect civilians. In one document of one of the terrorists who participated in the October 7th attack, I found a record from an Israeli hospital where his son was successfully treated for cancer. What kind of people would kill the savers of their own children? The only people who actually like die in Palestinian children are Hamas. They use these children to raise anti-Israel movement around the world. They use these children to pressure Milbrae City Council to accept a ceasefire resolution. We all want peace, not war, but it will be no peace in Milbrae.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Aylet.
Hi, my name is Ayelit. My father was born in Israel. My grandparents were socialist Zionists who moved to Palestine. I am absolutely in favor of a ceasefire resolution. Please agendize this work. This is your work. We have so much to do. We have so much work to do. You have so much work to do. We have so much work to do to help each other. If we do not help each other, there is no collective liberation. My liberation as a Jewish woman is absolutely tied up with the liberation of Palestinian people. If we do not see the connection, then we are gone. I do not understand why we are still arguing about this. Please agendize a ceasefire resolution.
Next speaker.
Sinis.
Hi there. I am calling to say, please absolutely do not agendize a ceasefire resolution. Many people are saying this is not divisive and I ask you to please examine what has taken place in your meeting this evening. This is anything but inclusive and bringing a community together. Excuse me, hang on one second here. A couple of other quick points. As we all, many of us know, Hamas has denied repeatedly ceasefire-proposed resolutions. I'm not sure why those are being asked. We have people here who are talking about bringing peace as part of a ceasefire resolution, yet I am blown away that repeatedly there is no one talking about the hostages and the deaths that have been incurred by the terrorist organization Hamas. Again, please do not agendize and please come up with other solutions to bring the community together.
Next speaker is Russell.
Hello, my name is Russell and I'm a Chinese-American resident from South City. And I just want to amplify your constituents in Milbrae who are calling for you to call for an end to the genocide in Gaza, funded by our tax dollars. I didn't want to say anything, but hearing the amount of people just saying blatant racist and Islamophobic lies with impunity just made me angry. Google is your friend. There was not a ceasefire on October 6th. 2023 saw one of the highest number of Palestinian children killed before October 7th. Your community is just asking you to call for an end to the violence, the most horrific atrocity in our lifetimes. Please filter out the noise from outside of your community, including me. You know, just listen to the folks who have been coming out. Know that 15,000 children have been killed with our tax dollars, with American bombs. People are being starved to death. There have been more children killed than the students in your local school district. Just remember to stick to your values, ignore the gaslighting, smoke and mirrors.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next speaker.
Hello. Good evening. I'm a scientist in the biotech industry here. I'm asking you to please keep the Palestinian-Israeli conflict out of our city, out of our schools, libraries, out of our local communities. I'm a US citizen and California resident for 25 years. I built my family and raised my kids here. But I was born in Israel almost 50 years ago into this conflict. I got very lucky twice while still living in Israel. The first time I was 16, I luckily was late to a bus station and missed the bus that got blown up by a Palestinian jihadist. He blew himself up inside the bus. And then the second time, I left a mall in Tel Aviv 10 minutes before another Palestinian jihadist blew himself up at the entrance of the mall. We all experienced too much pain and trauma. Do not bring this trauma here. You will not get out of it. Please, for the sake of our community kids and grandkids, keep this conflict out of our community.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Amal.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to respond to all the Islamophobic comments that were made as a Palestinian-American who lives in Milbrae, a mom of two boys who go to the Milbrae School District Schools. I do not agree that we should leave this out. I think this is very important. The kids are dying in Gaza and they're being starved. And this is very important for Palestinian-Americans, especially in the Milbrae city where a lot of Palestinians are growing up and raising their kids. I refuse to let this out of our city and I will not keep it out of the library or the schools or the community. Responding to the speaker before me, I disagree. And she was talking about being bombed in Israel. How about the bombs that are being dropped right now on Palestinian children, killing thousands and thousands of children as we're talking right now? I don't agree to that, I'm sorry. And I think it's very important that we vote on a ceasefire ASAP. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ido.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
If you care about the civilians on both sides who are dying in this war, then you will condemn Hamas. Instead of calling for this stupid, regardless, this ceasefire, which is ridiculous, the blood of all these innocent civilians, Palestinians and Israelis is on Hamas. Hamas is cowardly hiding behind their civilian population that they were supposed to protect. Hamas is the one that started this war on October 7th. Hamas is the one that is causing the death of their own people while they are cowardly hiding behind them. If you want peace, call for peace, not for a ceasefire. Calling for a ceasefire means that you're calling for more death and destruction. Shame on all of you who are calling for a ceasefire. The blood of everybody dead is on Hamas. Have a good night.
Okay. I'm gonna check on Grace X to see if she's available to speak now. Grace, if you would like to speak, please accept unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. First, I'd like to address the number of pro-Palestinian versus Jewish, Israel and Zionist supporters in the room. I think that has a lot to do with the fact that the Jewish community hasn't felt respect, especially since a banner that said, "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free", was hung on city property with full knowledge of the city manager, as well as all five state council members were present at that, what was supposed to be a peaceful protest. You gave them an inch trying to do a peaceful protest and they took a mile, asking for the genocide of the Jewish community. Second, I would like to say, Google, I'm disgusted that Mills graduate would think that they could Google something and it's our friend, it's full of propaganda. And this is disgusting and it's narcissist.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I think that's everybody. Is that correct?
That's correct, mayor.
Okay. So at this juncture, we're at 10:56. I think we need to ask for an extension so that we can complete this item. How about 20 minutes? No? One more? 20 minutes?
I'm sorry, I just learned last year, 20 minutes means we're shrunk. But if 20 minutes is what we can start with, I think we're gonna end up extending. So I'll support the motion if that was a motion by Councilman Papin.
Yeah, we're trying to be efficient. We're trying to get through this. Everybody's tired and I appreciate the patience from everybody. We'll start with 20 minutes if we need to go further. If by necessary, we will. Cover the question. Extend the meeting by 20 minutes.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Yes.
Councilman Kaylin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman. Mayor Fang.
Aye.
The meeting is extended to 11:20.
Okay, all right. Thanks to public, appreciated your patience and your dealing with this, thank you so much. Council, who would like to begin?
Okay.
Go ahead.
As I stated earlier last year as mayor, I did make a statement about the deaths that occurred on October 7th and subsequent at the October 10th council meeting. In the time between that, because we're a small city and we look each of us in the eye and I've met often with our Palestinian population, including asking what we should do, what we want to do. And with our Palestinian community, we asked for a meeting with our congressman. And after six weeks of waiting, we still didn't have it. And we finally agreed that his district director would meet with us and we met with Palestinian community at the Rec Center in January. And what I took from that was, and this was in January, a local resident who's lost 29 family members in that time period, so from October to January, people that can't communicate with their family back there. And I'm gonna include, because I have been trying to reach out to the other community and find out all sides of what our people here are feeling, that the family members and the friends of the hostages, they also cannot reach their families. So we're in a position here where both our Jewish population and our Palestinian population, regardless of religion, cannot talk to their loved ones. And that, I feel, is a city responsibility. The other thing that we talked about was, and in the meantime, I have met with other members of the Palestinian community and this is where I'm looking at Jamal here, that your wife has not been able to talk to her family for months and you do not know if they are dead or alive. To me, that is a Milbrae. It is a Milbrae issue because you are hurting. But I also, when I talked to the rabbi and I talked to JCRC, was not as aware, as I should have been, of the antisemitic attacks. And with that, I would direct, I'm looking at our chief of police right there, completely aside from a discussion of a resolution, is to make sure that we do stand for no hate on everybody. And we're all emotional, so if a young person used a word that should never have been used, I hope that there is an modicum of forgiveness on that. But I think we need to step up and make sure that there is no anti-Arab hate and that there is no antisemitic hate on that. I haven't heard of those. Usually, the public is pretty good at reaching out to me, phone or text or email, and I haven't heard those. So for the Jewish population, I was educated by speaking with the rabbi. I was also... So I met recently with friends, people I consider friends, and I'm looking them at the eye and trying to figure out what we can do best for Milbrae, for all of us, knowing that what we talked about Friday night was freeing the hostages, getting humanitarian aid to the people of Gaza, regardless of race, understanding that Hamas may get their hands on some of that. And I don't think there's anybody here in this room that is a Hamas supporter on that. And then we talked, is the resolution the only way to get there? And I will tell you that JCRC has sent me a statement that the city of Mountain View has made. It's not a resolution, it's a statement. And the city of San Jose, in addition to whatever they may have done to change their protocols, city of San Jose has a position, and I have both of them here, positions that cities can take that might take... I'm trying to walk the line, if you can't tell. If the resolution is so strongly emotional, can we find a different pathway? And I'm looking, I know, I'm looking, and we talked about, is there a pathway? And then actually, JCRC sent me some resolutions. Now, I'm gonna go on record, they don't want a resolution. But they sent me some resolutions that recognize that, and I'm simplifying here, Hamas is bad. And that we stand with the people of Israel, the people of Israel and the people of Palestine. And we stand for getting humanitarian aid in now. That's that walking of the line tonight. Because obviously, Milbrae, little Milbrae, is fighting some people much bigger than we are right now. And my job as your elected official is to try to bring all of us together when we are divided, badly divided, over an unhoused population on that and we're badly divided on a recall election. And I am asking for all of us to compromise a little. Can we find that line? I had hoped that the vice mayor sponsored a meeting with two sides, with the city manager on Saturday, and I prayed that it would come away with a place that the people of Milbrae could find common ground. And sadly, it did not seem that way. I wasn't there, but I am hoping that we can have common ground. And I'm hoping we can do it by, and I, regardless of what the city does, I can write a letter to our congressman asking for humanitarian aid now. I can ask for better protection of our Jewish population now. I have that individual power to do that. I am sad because my perspective of the resolutions that I have read are not antisemitic, they are not anti-Israel on that. And yet, that is where we are, to break people past that. And to get to what we really need to do is to protect the lives of the people in Gaza and the Jewish people that are, I was told today, a quarter of a million that are refugees within their area there. So there is hurt on both sides. And I wish, I wish we could come together in a way openly, knowing that we each have to give a little bit on that. So in terms of the resolution, I'm gonna tell you, every two or three hours, I switch sides. I am not normally somebody that doesn't have a pretty firm opinion, but there are valid points on all side. And I have cried and I have not slept. That is nothing to what the people in Israel and Gaza are going through right now. But I can't make it better. I cannot make it better for everyone. I can do the best I can by asking our congressman to move mountains to bring humanitarian aid in and to ask him, and I know that JCRC was not happy with the congressman, but all the rest of the Bay Area congresspeople signed the letter to President Biden on that. And there has to be a way for us here in Milbrae to move collaboratively. I want to support you all. And I would support a resolution more along the ones that have been sent to me, the ones that have been sent to me by JCRC on that, that seems to be a gathering of both sides on that. And it is calling. The hardest thing is, and to be honest, I've only scanned them, if this goes forward to staff and that's up to the other four council members or the five of us, is to look at some of these, some of the language that could go in. I'm seeing heads saying ceasefire, all or nothing. I have seen movement in the last week. We have seen movement. Is it permanent? Who knows? I wish we had the grace of time without more people dying, but we don't. So it, I'm wavering. I'm wavering on these issues, on this. And I wish I could make it all stop and I can't.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I thank everybody for coming and speaking tonight and being here to share your cares and your concerns with all of us. It just shows what a significant issue this is and how much it impacts our local community. As a reminder, the agenda item tonight is to decide if we want to put time and resources into a resolution or a statement. And if we do, give direction to what direction that resolution And if we do, give direction to what direction that resolution or statement would say. And then if that passes, the city staff would provide something, maybe a couple of different drafts for us to review, to bring back to council. So we have an opportunity here to, if we want to do this, to design what we would want for us, what would be right for Milbrae and for our communities. It's not just to simply say yes or no, but if we say yes, to give the direction for what we would want here in Milbrae. Does that make sense? I feel like people are looking at me confused. The, I have some notes. Because I too have been, you know, this is weighing heavy on my mind and on my heart. And I hear that because, you know, again, we have communities full of so much pain and suffering. But again, you know, when we think from October 7th to today, cumulatively, the number of people that have died is larger than the number of people in the city of Milbrae. We've heard a lot of numbers from everybody tonight on either side of the loss and the pain, the loss of life. I think that Milbrae could find and work towards a resolution or a statement that supports all in our community, that is humanitarian and peaceful, but also strong and that takes a stand for humanity, that includes ceasefire, includes release of all hostages, hostages, includes humanitarian aid. But I would like to see something in addition that I have not seen in the resolutions I've read, and I haven't read all of them, but I would like to see in a statement or resolution what our commitment is here in Milbrae to our community. You know, we can't change the international policy probably, right? But we can take a stand for humanity and we can say, here in Milbrae, this is how we want to be as a community. When it comes around safety, what are things that we can do with our sheriff's department and other safety resources? With acknowledging and celebrating all of our community and bringing people together. We already have work in the social equity commission and what are, you know, these are just a few ideas. But looking at how can we make that humanitarian statement? And then also in there, add how we can take action here in Milbrae to ensure that all of our community feels safe and that we together as a community support each other. So these are rough beginning ideas. But I think if collectively we're smart, caring people, I think we could possibly come up with a resolution or a statement that is strong, is not weak, that takes a stand and makes a commitment without creating division.
Thank you for the comment. Either the vice mayor or councilwoman Papen, do you have any comments? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Sure. Just like to say, I guess there was a comment alluding to my comments that I somehow chose sides or choose sides. I clearly stated that what I do for one, I do for all. I respect and honor and acknowledge all the voices in the room. And I believe there's nothing that could be said that hasn't already been said. We understand that, yes, this conflict is very complicated. And in some ways, people alluding that it's above our pay grade, and I get that. But what's not above my pay grade is the killing of any innocent life, whether in the streets of Chicago, Oakland, the Congo, or Gaza. And so that's what I stand for. And that's what my pay grade is, and that's where my focus is on the loss of any innocent life, including Israel. And so I think that's what we have to try to focus on. There was a lot of passion tonight, but I acknowledge the restraint that people have shown. And I commend our community for standing up and showing who and what Milbrae truly is. And so let us continue to have this conversation and dialogue and move forward with some type of resolution that honors all of that. And we can continue to be a model for other communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Papen.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for being here. The emotions are high and it's heartbreaking. There's no doubt. I have met with both sides. I've read hundreds of emails. This is divisive, as we know, the mayor's meeting. We can't find agreement here. What we can find agreement on is that everyone believes, and we all fight for humanitarianism. Terrorism is horrific. War is terrible. It's tragic and makes no sense whatsoever here. All life is precious. We know that. There is no doubt. And I think everyone here agrees to that. At least, I hope so. Loss of innocent lives is never acceptable. We support everyone in our community here. Know that for sure. And as individuals here, I have my opinions about foreign policy. And I express those opinions, and I will and should have already discussed them with our federal representatives here, with the president. We, as a city, have specific jurisdictions here, and it's disappointing, I know. But we need to stay focused here. We are elected to protect our residents from intolerance. We need to condemn violence, hatred, condemn intolerance at every single level here. We cannot be naive. We have seen these discussions go on in other cities here. The discussions alone, and even here tonight, have amplified the division. In fact, in certain cities right next door here, staff was threatened. Councilmembers have been criticized and threatened. There is no doubt that antisemitism and Islamophobia has increased as a result of the open free speech that we have here. And it is within our community here. It's a fact. We all want to be better. We need to be better. And we need to lead with empathy, and we need to ensure all of our residents feel safe and supported and welcomed here. This is a resolution. This is basically performative resolution here. We can't ask people to pick sides and judge one another. We, as individuals, should be acting, absolutely acting here. What is going on, the loss of lives on both sides here? 1,200 on October 7th, 35,000, 15,000 children. This is all terrible. This is horrific, and we as individuals need to act on that. The city, as noted, we don't take federal issues up here. We can speak out about them, and we are. We need to speak out on them here. But this is beyond our jurisdiction. It is not beyond our hearts because we will continue to fight for the innocent lives that are lost. But this is a piece of paper here. And do we really believe that the innocent people suffering in Palestine right now, this is going, we're going to send this to them and make a difference? We need to make a difference now. They don't have water. They don't have food. That is the difference we need to make. The humanitarian aid, that is what we as individuals need to fight for. The borders need to be open so that aid can get in. That's Israel and Egypt. We need to take a realistic approach to what we can do as individuals here. But let there be no doubt, this piece of paper that people want is like, what? Oh, we got one. We've got nothing with a piece of paper here. We as individuals need to take action on our own, as a community here. We need to gather. But we cannot ignore the increases in antisemitism and Islamophobia. So I don't believe a resolution as is being requested here is the answer to that. This divisiveness is trickling down to our schools, to our students. You've heard students speak here today. I've met with the superintendent last week. His biggest concern is the incivility that he hears at our schools. What message are we sending? The gavel had to be struck how many times tonight just to insist, please, have civility for one another. We need to bring our community together. We need to. I don't believe this piece of paper here is the way to do that. You asked about the Armenian resolution? That is in recognition of a genocide that should never have been forgotten. The reason there was one in World War II is because a certain person said, well, nobody remembers what the Ottoman Turks did to the Armenians. That's why we remember it here. So it is not forgotten here. And when a banner is brought to our city here that says, "From the river to the sea", many of us didn't know what that meant. That is a slogan from Hamas that is asking for another.
Please, please, hope. Please.
I'm sorry.
Please.
If that is not, that is the, again, you see? We don't want divisiveness here. And from what I understood, poor signs of disrespect from anyone. But you see what this is bringing about? We need to bring people together here. The information I stated, yes, I got it online. Maybe I was wrong. So I'm sorry about that. But you see what that one comment brought about? You see, I can be wrong. If I'm wrong, I just said I was. Apologize for that. But look what is happening. Look what is happening here. This should not be happening here. This is not what we're about. We're supposed to be about bringing people together here. We're supposed to be about protecting our residents from intolerance. And my statement brought about intolerance, and I apologize for that. But a resolution is not going to get us there. What is going to get us there is meeting together, finding ways that we can help the people in Gaza that are suffering, that we can somehow get them the water and the food that they need. This is where our compassion needs to be. So I cannot support a written resolution. But I can support my community and I can support in my way. But this is something that I believe is beyond our jurisdiction. But it is not beyond our hearts to do it individually. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papen. I'd like to request the council's permission, make a motion to extend it by another 20 minutes so that we can get this thing done up to... We're trying to do the best we can so that we can get this matter resolved and decided one way or another. And I thank you for the patience, and I continue to ask for your patience and your civility. 20 minutes?
Second.
Go call, please.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kaylin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fang.
Aye.
The meeting is extended to 11:43 PM. Motion carried by 5 to 0.
Thank you. Those who wish to stay can stay. Those who wish to go can go. Please, do so quietly. Thank you. I've spoken to both sides, both the Palestinian community and also the Jewish community. Here is what I will say. Your life, your peace, your safety, it's what I'm elected to take care of. That's my job, and I'm going to do it. How do we achieve peace? I mean, look at tonight. One comment can ignite a lot of different emotion, but at the same time, you all stuck through this evening, four and a half hours now, as patient as you are, as civil as you are, as advanced of a citizenship as you all are. I can already see that in your writing. You can do a lot better than what some of those folks 10,000 miles away are doing. You can do much better. And how do we achieve peace, which we all want? It's by talking to one another, find common grounds among one another. There's no real easy way. I honestly don't see a real easy way for this council to come up with a resolution that you all can be happy with. There's just no way. Somebody is going to be bound to be very unhappy about it. And then in the end, what happened? More divisiveness. Does that achieve anything? It worsens things. But at least you all want to be here tonight, gather in this chamber, in this people's chamber, because you want a solution. You do want peace. You've demonstrated you can be peaceful and be respectful to one another. The city had made available the Constitutional Square, which is right outside of this chamber right here, for free speech. And the Palestinian community did have a peaceful vigil. And they did invite some members of the Jewish community to speak on that vigil. It was peaceful. I'm proud of our residents who are able to come together and express their free speech, express their idea and opinion in a peaceful way despite deep disagreement, despite high emotion. If we are to succeed in being peaceful to one another, we need to start here locally, just like some of the members have said before. One comment that has been made, and it really hits me personally, is that sitting here on this diet is not five white men. As the first Asian immigrant to be elected to sit in this chair, that resonate deeply to me. But at the same time, I didn't get here because I'm yelling and screaming. I try to work. I try to talk to people, and I try to listen to people, and I try to find common ground and agreement. That's how progress is made. That's how people can understand you. When I first got elected, I felt like I'm not being trusted by some members of the community. But I think through time and listening, I think we can make progress. And this is the same progress that we need to make. Both sides needs to listen to one another and find those common ground, committed to finding those common ground and those agreement in order to find peace. And the peace needs to start here. If we don't start peace here, what is that piece of paper going to do? Right? So that, if there is a piece of paper to be adopted at all, that needs to be a collaborative effort between members of our own community on both sides together, hand in hand, in agreement. That is the premise at which a true peaceful resolution can be achieved. Without that, that piece of paper only means more division, only divides people even further. even further. And that's, if we can, if the community, both sides can come together with their representative to come up with those languages, then I would be supportive of it. Only under those conditions would that goal be achieved, and that's what I can support, if that makes sense. As a woman.
So, thank you, Mayor. I've had a chance, and no one else has, to read what the City of Mountain View has drafted or the City of San Jose, and I believe Mr. Minzer told me a couple of other statements that did try to bring our Palestinian and our Jewish populations together on that. I know that my friends, and I am so sorry that I can't give you everything you wanted, but I think, because part of the discussion was, could we have a series of meetings? And that's very hard to ask when people are dying every day. But Mayor, with your comment and what I've had the time to read here, I would support a motion that we create, I'm not sure the best mechanism, that process to try to bring the people of Milbrae, our Jewish community, our Palestinian community, which is both Muslim and Christian, together to work on that language as a first step. I honestly think, you know, I come from an activist background, and I do believe that the work that you have done and everybody supporting the Palestinian community has helped to get us where the federal government is right now on that. But I'm not sure the resolution is going to do anything at this particular moment in time besides cause divisiveness. However, the statements, the statements say the same thing. If you've read these, they say the same thing in a different format, and that is our message to the federal government of what we want on that. So Mayor, if that incorporated what you're hoping, I didn't do it, I certainly didn't put it in the form of a motion on that. I would, I would support that. I think that's what Councilwoman Cahillan, I don't want to speak for her, there's the resolution that has become so politicized versus another mechanism to help us, bring us together and tell the federal government what we want.
If any languages were to be drafted, it cannot be political, so none of the five of us should be a part of that. It must be community-driven by mutual agreement of both sides on equal amount of participant on both sides. Upon their approval, upon their agreement, that's when this council can even consider adopting such a document. But it has, may I? I cannot emphasize enough, true peace requires both sides to talk to one another and compromise with one another. That's how true peace can happen. Otherwise, all we're going to do is fight more. Right? So to that end, this must be a citizen-led effort so that both sides can agree, so that we can make forward and positive progress. Cahillan.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So are you suggesting than rather directing staff to create something to bring back to council, that you're asking the community collaboratively to create something to bring to council?
That's how I see the only way to come to peace and agreement. Otherwise, they're going to say, oh, you're taking sides. Please, public comment, it's over, and I understand, I agree with that. Hold on, hold on. That's what I see the only, we'll get to you in a second, Vice Mayor. That's how I see as pathway to even get to an agreement. Because if the communities don't agree to it, what good does it do for this council to try to adopt a piece of document that the community does not agree? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that in theory, you know, I hear what you're saying, and that makes a lot of sense if it was, if there was mutual motivation on both sides to obtain a resolution. As Councilwoman Snyder stated, that despite getting sample resolutions and wording and statements from the JCRC, that in no way would they support a resolution, and I totally understand that. That's their prerogative, and I get it. But if that is the starting point, the natural response would be, if the mayor said, unless we come together, then that means, I guess, we just won't come together and we get what we want, and then that's ultimately is choosing sides. So I would respectfully ask for a vote and just, you know, and then choose sides that way, and at least we're not skirting our responsibility as leaders and pushing it back, the responsibility onto our citizens. If we support it, we support it, if we don't, we don't. But to put it back, to skirt the responsibility and put it back on our residents, only to know that it's a fool's errand, you know, I don't see how that's going to be productive either. So I would just respectfully ask that we give it some more thought. If you would like more involvement, I would rather recommend having the representatives from our community that requested this item on the agenda, work with the, either the JCRC verbiage that they've produced, and add as a representation of the Israeli and Jewish community, that that information is taken in consideration and it's merged with their verbiage and the verbiage of the JCRC as the representative voice of consensus or some type of consensus between the two sides, rather than having the two sides come together and say, hey, unless the two of you agree, there's going to be nothing, because ultimately one side probably wants nothing, and so we have to consider that. So hopefully I was cogent enough for everyone to understand, I don't want to be, I know it's probably like three in the morning here, or just about 2:30. So my apologies if I'm not as cogent as I want to be.
Okay. Can I just respond first, and then we'll make sure we give you opportunity to redirect? Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I appreciate your comment. First of all, I will say, just on the protocol, the request was made on February 13, which is 55 days ago, and today is the 55th day, which is well within the 60-day protocol, so I just want to point of order, I want to be clarified. Second, on your comment, this document, the intent must be to bring communities together, must be to find common grounds among people so we can bring peace. Because this resolution, if we can get there, when we get there, the purpose is to bring peace, the purpose is to bring agreement. If we just pick a side and just go ahead and adopt a piece of paper, what's going to happen in the end? The end result is more fighting, more disagreement, more yelling, more screaming. That did not achieve the goal. The goal is to bring people together. And I have faith, I mean, look at tonight. I thought it was going to be 600 people showed up with 400 speakers' lips and, and, you know, we've got six deputies here to keep peace because I was concerned. But you proved me wrong. You proved to me that you can be peaceful, you proved to me that you were committed to a peaceful process. You committed to listen to one another despite deep disagreement. When you listen to comment, people disagree, and I get it. But you commit to sit this one through because you want that peace in the end. And at the end of the day, it's your life that I'm responsible to enhance, it's your safety that I'm responsible to provide. Your life is my job, and I want to emphasize that more than once. So that, the process of bringing both sides together and agreeing to these languages on those condition is the only way to bring peace to this community of whom I am elected to serve. Councilwoman Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor, on the concept of how to create a committee. Again, through all of the meetings and voicemails and discussions, I was talking to the city manager, and I'm going to put him a little bit on the spot, to take this away from staff so that it is not staff's involvement. The city manager said that we could potentially have funding to bring in a facilitator that we used in the past to help get to the statement or the resolution on that. City manager, am I misspeaking? We talked about it last week.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes, please.
So depending on the direction of the city council, all I've said is we've used Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center effectively in the past, so that was a statement I made.
So that there's somebody to help formulate.
To facilitate those discussions.
And that fits, I think, within the Vice Mayor, the Vice Mayor's suggestion that that gives a starting point, a couple of resolutions, a couple of statements made by other cities that talk about everything that the Palestinian community has asked me to try to bring forward.
But I would emphasize those who participate in those discussions must be Milbrae residents, local to us, because they are the ones who we elected to serve, they are, those are the voices that we're elected to listen to. Mr. Vice Mayor, you have your hands up.
Yeah, yes, I was just going to say, I agree that that, the paper, both with you and Councilwoman Papin, that it would just be a symbolic piece of paper, but there's a lot of symbolism and solidarity that goes with that for the purpose of our residents. And if we do want sustained peace, it's going to take time, it's going to take neighbor-to-neighbor conversation. We did have that on Saturday, we just couldn't come to resolution. There was suggestion of continuing talks exactly like that, not necessarily having council members be a part of it, but just having those opportunities for neighbors to talk to neighbors and not talk past neighbors. As you stated, tonight was a great start, but those talks will have to continue because we can pass the resolution tonight, and that will not create a peace in Milbrae, even if both sides were a part of it and had their fingerprints on it. The recall, whether that happens or not, there will not be peace, there will not be unity, there will be divisiveness, regardless what happens with the law too. And we have to understand that, that it takes ongoing conversations, talking to each other, not through each other. So if you want to have a part of this moving forward, whatever the rest of the council agrees to tonight, but have a component where we're creating opportunities for neighbors to talk to neighbors on this and other critical issues that we have going on within our city.
And to that comment, peaceful agreement takes a long time to get to, and it takes commitment to get there. I can only imagine how many years has it been where these conflicts exist and it still has not been resolved? And it's not just isolated to Gaza, the Middle East, everywhere else is the same. That commitment to continue those discussions, to find those common ground, to find those agreements, however difficult they may be, however nuanced they may be, that's what's needed in order to truly bring peace together. So if anything, if that's, if, it's not even if, the peace among our community is paramount to me and to this council, I think I can say that pretty confidently. And we're committed to bring that peace, allowing that peace process to take place right here in our city. And that requires both sides to talk to one another and work with one another on a common ground, on a common goal. We cannot facilitate that, it cannot be political. So if at all, if we're committed to doing this, then an intermediary conflict resolution to bring both sides together to make sure you come up with an agreeable language, then this council will. That's the path, that's the pathway at which I see this council can come to an agreement on adopting such a resolution, upon both sides agreeing to those languages. And that is what I'm committed to do.
With your permission, and I'm never the one to try to do a resolution, let me try this, city clerk. The resolution is to ask our Palestinian community and our Jewish community to continue working on a joint statement slash resolution, starting with as a basis, the statements by the City of Mountain View and San Jose and the resolutions for peace provided by JCRC with support of the Conflict Resolution Center to work forward and to bring back, and to do this as quickly as possible, and to bring it back to a future council meeting. That's the motion.
And just to clarify on some of those conditions, is that the members who joined that committee to have those discussions must be Milbrae residents, and there need to be majority agreement within that committee for that resolution to be brought back for this council for consideration.
I agree.
Is that agreeable to anybody?
Yes.
Can you repeat the motion?
So the motion is to, how many, three and three?
I'm sorry, three and three.
Members on both sides?
I'd love to hear the Conflict Resolution people, this is way out of our bandwidth to do something like this.
Exactly.
City man, three and three sounds like reasonable, but flexibility, I think, should be part of this.
It must be equal on both sides.
Could we ask PCRC for their recommendation?
The Conflict Resolution Center.
Conflict Resolution Center.
Yeah, ask them for a recommendation. Let them facilitate those discussions.
As a, in discussion of the motion, so I think I heard a motion in a second, so discussion.
Specifically.
My only discussion is, oh yeah, we need another one of those. But this is not like the Social Equity Commission, this is a get in, get it done, and bring it back to us ASAP.
Right. Put people in a room, get them into an agreement.
People are dying every day. Let's put a deadline, not keep it open.
So I understand that, I understand, I'm very aware of it. And again, it requires both sides to listen to one another and seek those common grounds so both sides can agree. That's why it cannot be one-sided, because this resolution should not and must not become a document that further drives this community apart. It's this community that I am elected to serve that I'm concerned about, that I wanted to heal the wound. That's my jurisdiction, that's well within my pay grade. It is your life, your life, your life that I'm elected to serve.
In terms of a call, let's just be practical here. Our next council meeting is two weeks from tonight, agenda packets have to be done in about seven days, which doesn't give any time. So I'm going to say, and this is a very fast track for our first May meeting, that does not mean, Jamal, that I am not with you, going to work on a letter to our congressman tomorrow.
So Mayor, I just have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Because I don't want to set ourselves up for failure. The deadline is fine, but I don't know if, and it's a Conflict Resolution Center, you can even, yeah, right, so I just, you know, I want to point that out, I don't want you to have an expectation, set us up for failure and say, well, just limit it to three people, somebody just said, well, what if we just... somebody just said, well, what if we just, what if we, what if we don't come to the table? And I get that's what PCRC and facilitation is all about. So just a little bit more clarity, not to overly make things complex, or flexibility, perhaps.
Well, I would use the word commitment. It's, members of the communities tonight are committed to seek peace and find peace. Well, then, those member, for those who wants to seek peace and for those who want to find peace, would likely volunteer to this and find peace among our own community. That's where the effort needs to be made.
Mr. Mayor, just for process.
Right.
Right, and expectation, perhaps we reach out to PCRC, and the expectation is we come back then to the city council with a plan, kind of a work plan, you know, really based on their schedule and their commitment.
Which could be done by the next council meeting, sure, I mean, that's within.
I believe so, I mean, either that council meeting or the first meeting in May.
Can't we do that full motion with a contingency, rather than just go to PCRC and come back and then have to do it again?
Meaning, meaning what?
Meaning would I make a friendly amendment to what has been stated in the motion, with the city to reach out?
Okay, one person at a time, point of order.
Because I understand what Councilmember Kaylin said, can we?
Okay, one person at a time.
Maybe a little clarity would help.
Ms. Kaylin, could you just please speak one more time, and then with Councilmember Schneider, and I think the Vice Mayor has his hand up, so.
So if I understand correctly, the city manager is asking for, instead of the full motion, just a motion to reach out to Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center and then bring that back?
No, no, that, whatever the motion is, all I'm saying is just reality and time and reaching out, and so what I was saying is that, you know, the demands, obviously from the public, get it done as quickly as possible, without consulting with Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center and putting together a plan, right, I don't know what the answer is tonight, so what I'm saying is, we can reach out to them, I can come back to the city council with a plan.
Let them recommend a plan.
Correct, right, we work with them and develop a, kind of a scope of work and a plan for community engagement, then that way we can determine, you know.
How best to move forward.
Three, or five, or seven, or not limited at all, or whatever they may recommend in the facilitation.
Fair enough. We've got to take it out of this councils and let the Conflict Resolution Center to drive it, because they are the expert.
Yeah, that's right.
To conflict resolution.
Correct.
And then report back.
And then they, let them report back.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we need a continuation.
Yeah.
Okay, can we finish in the next 10 minutes?
We're close.
All right, up to 12 PM, up to 12 AM.
A motion, a second.
I made a motion. Elaine, please.
Councilmember Schneider, Councilmember Papen?
Yes.
Councilmember Papen?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Papan?
Aye.
The meeting is extended to midnight, 5:00.
You were saying?
I appreciate what the city manager says, my only concern is that's two more weeks before the group can start meeting and people are dying every day. Is there a way that we can amend the motion that says you're gonna go and work on that, and if we've got people that I'm looking at right now that I think, I see Oded, I see Jamal, they can at least start meeting on their own, start meeting on their own while we try to bring in people to help us with this.
Yeah, I understand that. So here's the way I look at this, yes, they can certainly meet and try to come to, try to come to agreement on things, but then we also need the Conflict Resolution Center to be able to set up, set us up for success.
Yeah.
So that it can get done. Like I said, peace takes commitment and time to get through, and we want peace in this community as soon as possible. That's my goal, that's the goal, that should also be the goal of this council, is to bring peace to all of you. You are well within my pay grade, that's where my priority is, if that makes sense.
So in bringing it back.
Sorry, public comments are done, I'm sorry.
You'll have to physically escort me if you just don't give me one minute of your time.
Then I will.
It's about to be five hours that we're sitting here.
Please, Deputy, I cannot do that.
Thank you for your time, everybody here who came here, thank you for your five hours.
Please allow her to sit down, please.
Thank you to all the deputies that.
You were supposed to make the decision, don't ask the vote, you do it.
Please, ma'am, and this gentleman too, please, please, I asked, I asked that everybody keep cool, we're here to resolve conflict, not to insinuate conflict, please, please sit down, ma'am. Please sit down, we're trying to, we're trying to come to conclusion, we're trying to come to agreement here, please. City manager, wait, 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 I'm sorry.
So there's a motion at a second, and now we're in discussion about the process set forth with reaching out to Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center.
Right, let them bring back a process.
Correct.
To try to put both groups together and come to agreement on a possible language on a resolution for adoptions by this council.
Correct, to facilitate that engagement.
Perfect. Is that, who made the motion? Okay, Councilwoman Schneider made the motion, who has a second?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor has, okay, Vice Mayor has a second, do you still have your hands up? You want to make a comment?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
I wholeheartedly support and trust PCRC, we do have to consider whether or not they have the bandwidth to ramp up something immediately under the timeline we want, so I do believe that if we give direction to city staff to work with them, we'll find something out, whether or not they can handle it immediately, or if it's gonna take time. If it's something that could be done immediately, I do suggest that that's a part of the motion, that we allow the process to start prior to coming back to council if, the timeline, if they can proceed faster. Additionally, I think we have to be mindful of what JCRC communicated to Councilwoman Schneider, that here are some samples, here is what other cities have done, but we will not fundamentally support any resolution, so you have to keep that in mind. So if that's coming from JCRC, please understand that when someone on the Israeli side says, I don't support any resolution, that that very well may be what we have to respect. And if that's the case, we have to have an alternative to including the voice of JCRC or those that may represent our Israeli community. And so I would say, absent individuals willing to commit to work together with the Palestinian community and creating a joint resolution, that we utilize the words of what the JCRC presented to Councilwoman Schneider.
Vice Mayor, you don't have the opportunity to look at the audience, I'm seeing heads shaking from both our Palestinian and our Jewish community, so I think they can start working. And I'm only offering up what JCRC sent me because of the conversation I had with Mr. Minzer, and then he followed up by sending me a bunch of resources to give us a place to start. And it does include a language, a resolution language in there, and it includes the letters on that, so it's a starting point. I couldn't send it to all of us because of the Brown Act.
Then I would just conclude that absent that, I'm not sure how suggesting this would get a different result than just turning down the resolution tonight. I think it's punting, and I think we vote on a resolution tonight, and if, you know, I don't, that's just my opinion, and for that, I rescind my second to the motion.
Okay, so.
Then we don't have a motion at this point.
So actually, Councilwoman Schneider made the motion to contact Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center to bring back a process at which to engage both sides to come up with language on a possible resolution for this council to opine and possibly adopt in the future meeting. That was your motion.
That's the second half of the motion, but yeah, yeah.
That's her motion. The Vice Mayor said he wouldn't support it, that's fine. Is there a second here on this bench?
Sorry, Vice Mayor, can you say again why you reconsider and rescind your motion, your second?
I do that because based on my last meeting with both sides over the weekend, there was a tremendous amount of consensus on what success would look like, but during the conversation of a resolution, there was no willingness to get there, despite the commitment of everyone on the call to want to get there and want to see the humanity of their neighbors, there was just a fundamental similar to what Councilwoman Schneider mentioned, that it's not about the individual, it's about their fundamental beliefs that they won't support a resolution at all. And if my goal is to not have a resolution passed, my goal would be to not show up or to stall, and that's not saying that that's what would happen, but I'm saying that that's a possibility. And so I would hope that there is some kind of mechanism in place that would allow for some verbiage of what JCRC submitted to be included as representative of that voice in lieu of individuals that are committed to that outcome. And I know if we have both sides not willing in the room, then that might be a sense of that it's something that we should consider, or I just might be totally off, but I'm just, like I said, it's 3:00 in the morning, and I'm just trying to get us to a point where we can get a semblance of consensus for the purpose of what the mayor has stated.
So let me kind of try to help address some of that. The goal is to bring people together to agree, because if, and then that requires commitment, I think I said that more than once. But if we approach this with cynicism, then it's less than likely to be successful. We need to approach it with a sense of commitment and a sense of trust to find those peace. I mean, the audience tonight, they came with the intention and the commitment to seek peace, and I'm proud of them for having done that, to sit through a more than five-hour meeting at this point in time. I am, I have faith in our own community to seek those commitments and to get rid of cynicism and committing to peaceful resolution to this. That's what I want to be able to enable my community to do, because at the end of the day, if we try to force upon a piece of paper that either side don't agree or unwilling to come to the table to, that paper will simply become another point of argument and insinuate more divisiveness, which is not the purpose of this document. The document is a process, it's just the end result being a document, but the process is what is required in order to bring this community together. It's the process that matters, not the paper that matters. The process to bring people together, to bring to an agreement, that's what is gonna heal this community. This is the community from whom and which I am elected to serve, all of us to serve.
Right.
I want them to agree, and I want them.
I agree.
Yeah, and I want them to come together, and so.
I agree with that, but I just, like I said, I just believe that it's, at some point, we have to acknowledge that, all due respect, it's not cynicism, it's the reality of one's belief that they cannot and will not, not necessarily because they don't want to, because in their hearts, and the ones that I've talked with, and the individuals that were on that call, when you listen to their heart, when you listen to their words, that's what they want.
I understand.
They just cannot, and I'm putting myself out there on a limb by stating it, and obviously, it's, in your words, saying cynicism, cynicism, it's getting taken the wrong way. And so I just want to make it clear that I have full faith in those that were on that call, and those that are on the calls today to do the right thing and be a part of this process, but sometimes we have to be realistic, and so, you know, if having, if a vote of this is a vote of faith in all of our community, I would support it, but, and that's it, and I'll just leave it at that.
I appreciate it, and it is the vote of faith, it is a vote of my faith in my community, and I applaud them on their commitment, they sit through more than five hours a meeting, try to seek that peace. I have faith that they can do the same in order to seek peace within this community, which is what's important to all five of us and all of our staff, I believe, at this table. Go ahead, Ms. Kaylin, and then Ms. Schneider after.
I am grateful that tonight we are talking about taking an action. I think there might be some feelings of disappointment in the community, but coming in today, I would have guessed that, you know, this would have been a less open conversation on the dais, and I am very pleased and hopeful that we are coming together to choose to take an action and to be thoughtful about it, not just take any action, but to find an action that's right for Milbrae, and maybe trying a model that other cities haven't tried yet. And so I am hopeful, you know, we just had a couple of brief meetings that we brought people together, and it's a start, and I'm, for better or worse, I'm an idealist and a hopeful person, and I'd like to pursue this and hope that we can come to something that our community can be proud of and that we can bring back to our council. And so if we.
One final comment, I think we need to call for a vote, otherwise, we need to keep extending this.
Second to extend the meeting for.
Please, can we wrap it up?
We're over.
Yeah, I understand.
All right.
So there's a motion.
Let me.
Yeah.
The motion, the agenda item tonight for the public and for us is to discuss and consider directing staff to draft a ceasefire humanitarian resolution related to the current events in Gaza. This is an action item. My motion is to ask our Milbrae residents, our Milbrae Palestinian community residents and our Jewish community residents to continue working on a joint statement and/or resolution, starting with as a basis, the documents that were sent to me by JCRC, City of Mountain View, City of San Jose, and several resolutions that have been working their way through the Bay Area with the support of the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. So the Vice Mayor has rescinded the second, I don't know if he's brought it back.
I'll second it.
Okay, and we may have lost the Vice Mayor, I don't see his photo on there. So we've got a motion.
We have form still, yes.
And I thank everybody for that. Let's call the question.
Okay, roll call, please.
My first time of trying to call the question.
Ms. Papen, one final comment, please.
So I think it was put well on an interview this weekend. We don't want walls, we want bigger tables, right? So bringing people to the table is the most important thing here. So bringing people to the table is the most important thing here.
Correct.
Now, we can, I think the Vice Mayor was trying to point out, we can't determine what the results will be. We can be hopeful and optimistic.
Yeah.
If that, I mean, if that's what the motion is, I just want to clarify that. Because we've come this far and this is what we are trying to do is bring the community together.
Correct.
Is that, all right. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Papen?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye. The city council directed Milbrae, asked Milbrae Palestinian and Jewish community residents to work with JCRC and come together and draft a draft resolution with a vote of 5:0.
Okay, with that, I want to thank everybody in the community who are joining the room today, set through more than five hours meeting. The meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Recording stopped.
Did you see this article in the Chronicle? There's some errors in there.
Yes.
Did you want to send corrections? If not, I.